Good afternoon, everybody. We'll call this meeting to order. I would like to switch up the first two items on our agenda if we could because we have a guest with us today. A presentation by the Local Government Insurance Trust, or Legit, a training grant to the Hagerstown Police Department. So at this time, I'd like to bring forward Chief of Police, Mr. Timothy Alesworth, the Executive Director, and I think Mr. DeHaven is also here from our Human Resources Department.
Thank you, sir, for having me here today. My name is again, it's Tim Alesworth. I'm with the Public Government Trust.
I forgot my glasses. Yeah, please, yeah, we need a hot mic for the viewing audience at home.
Fill in, yes. And at any rate, I'm here today to present a training grant check for the amount of $872 to your police department for driver training, and I'll let the chief go into more detail on what that training entails. But before I get started, I want to say on behalf of the Board of Trustees and other members, thank you for belonging to the trust. We really do appreciate Hagerstown participation. For the third year in a row, we've had 100 percent renewal, and I appreciate your part in that. We can now insure 143 of the 156, I'm not including Baltimore City, of the Maryland municipalities. And so we just about have every one of them, and want to thank you for that. Since 2010, I started in December of 2009, but since 2010, including the grant today, we presented Hagerstown with approximately $10,000 in training grants for various things, such as firearm instructor school, use of deadly force, TASER instructing course, and then today's driving class. And wanted to mention some of the credits that Hagerstown gets for participating in the trust, and membership credit and longevity credit for the automobile general liability police and public officials, as well as a Kalia credit. You get roughly $1,800 credit per year for being an accredited police agency. So your gross premium would normally be about $490,000, and you all get $90,000 roughly in credit, so for a net premium of about $400,000. And again, thank you for your participation.
Thank you.
And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to the chief and let him describe the type of training that this check is for.
Sure. Thank you, Rich, Mr. Alesworth. Legit has helped us out in the past with training, and it's always a go-to resource for us. We get some training that comes across our training calendar, and we don't have a budget for it, so we've reached out to Legit. They've supported us. We're going to be able to send eight officers and supervisors to this. It's a police-related, police-training, sort of going beyond what we normally would see with pursuit driving, and it's a real eye-opener for police. It's been highly recommended by Captain Sheriff's Department who'd went to it. They're also going to be partnering and sending a lot of deputies to this training. And it's really geared towards the police officer and supervisor that's out there and focusing on pursuit driving and the dangers of it, the importance of what's been taking place all across the country, which is just a second review of these police pursuits and the dangers of them that are embarked on by the police every day when we do them. So hopefully, this group will bring it back, and will bring it back to the rest of the police officers in in-service training on what they learn, and so we're looking forward to it.
Wonderful. Thank you for having me.
Indeed, thank you.
Thank you.
I think our communications person would like to, you want to do an official photo off? Come on up to the dais here. We'll get the seal in the background. Aaron, do you want to stand down here? Is that the best place for you?
One, two, one more. Three, one, two.
All right, great. Okay, let's do the preliminary agenda review. One thing I did want to mention, I think I put an email out to everybody about my desire to change the rules of procedure for when we have the mayor and council comments.
Somebody swings, Ryan.
I think it would be helpful if we had citizen comments, and we listen to those comments, and that we move the mayor and council comments from the end of the meeting, at which point during our late meetings, usually everybody's ready for the meeting to be over, and we move those council comments to just after citizen comments. That way, citizens are actually still here to hear any response that we might have to their comments, and also to make sure the press is here, because sometimes they have deadlines, and if our meetings are running late and we have comments at the end of the meeting, then those comments are not able to be publicized. So I'm open to some discussion on that. Is anybody mortally opposed to moving the council comments to post-citizen comments?
Just moving them for the legislative section.
Correct. No, this would just be for the regular sessions.
Citizens come in.
Yeah.
That's what I understood.
Okay. So we'll put that on the agenda for next week to make that rules change, and we'll have an updated text of the rules. Otherwise, the consent agenda. Public Works has a bulk road salt contract extension. A few items for the Department of Utilities, a wastewater repair of nitrate recycle pumps. We also, oh, I forgot to mention, thank you, Mr. City Administrator, we have a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant for the fiscal year 2013, the CAPER, or the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. So there will be a hearing on that. Going back to the consent agenda, the wastewater implant pumps, the filter airlift, and that's it for the consent agenda. Any issues with that? I heard Councilmember Munson, or Metzner, mentioned that it is a shorter agenda than our previous regular session. Unfinished business, we have approval of ordinances that have been previously introduced. Does anyone have any questions or issues with those? The Hager's Crossing PUD, the Land Management Code is a separate document, the Land Management Code amendments, the offering of conveyance and acceptance of the Bowman-Hollyhock land out where the Broadfording Road improvements will be, the smoking ban in city parks, acquisition of permanent drainage easement on Young Avenue, and three-month extension of the Antietam Cable Television franchise. So that's all unfinished business. New business, introduction of an ordinance, the noise ordinance that we discussed at the last meeting, transferring land to Burkitt's Deli, which is a follow-up from previous business, approval of a resolution for the lease out on Ritchie Road, I believe that's the watershed area, is that right? The quitclaim request for Cleveland Avenue, which is, I believe, on today's agenda? No? Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's in the agenda for next week. And the approval of a contract with Sinagro. Any questions on that? Hearing none? We will move forward with that agenda? Yes, and a reminder for council members, we are going to have a work session at 5:00 related solely to the budget. So that'll be 5:00 next Tuesday. I do want to say that we're planning on having an executive session on the 1st of October at 3:00 to discuss property acquisition. The other, I think that's it. That's it for the preliminary agenda. Any questions or comments on that? All right. The next item on the agenda are the revisions to the RFP for the Economic Analysis and Implementation Plan for Hagerstown Sustainable Community Plan. Coming to the table, Kathy Marr, our Planning Director, Gillespieo, Economic Development Director. Did he leave you some freebies there? Oh, very nice.
Because they're first back.
There you go. That means they belong to you. So what we're really looking for is a decision tonight to get started and complete this project by June 30th, is that right? And this is funding from the state that we have to use or lose. I think this presents, I've said before, an opportunity not to create a new plan, but to give us an implementation plan for taking all of the plans that have been created in the past, and I will spare everybody going through the list, and putting together the right kinds of minds to implement the plan and what kinds of projects, and also to create those strong visual marketing tools, as well as get the community engaged in the process so that everybody is aware of what the vision and what the plans are. With that, I'll turn it over to our staff.
Okay, sure. At the last meeting, you asked us to seek input from the community.
We have bad microphones in this chamber, really bad ones.
At the last meeting, you asked us to go and seek comment from the community, and so we did. We sent the draft RFP to the Downtown Alliance and the Economic Development Commission for the county, and we received some comments. Mostly, it was with the way we were packaging the RFP, not really with the approach. And so we made the changes that were requested, which resulted in the renaming the RFP so it's more clear that it's not just an economic analysis, but it's also intended to be an implementation plan, so that we have something that we can, you know, get boots on the street and things actually happening. And so the MMO outlines how it's sort of re-terminologing some economic terms, and then just the name of the project, but basically, it's the same approach. It's just like calling the analysis of the catalyst projects a cost-benefit analysis as opposed to an economic feasibility and things to that nature. And then we also, we added in, as requests suggested by one of the comments, that we seek additional input on tactics and strategies for our downtown vision so that we can gain some additional expertise from the consultant. So we wrap that into the community engagement process.
And we've shared these documents with our contacts at the state DBED office, and they are supportive of the direction, and so we're seeking the approval tonight so that we can formally submit this to the state.
And just so everyone's clear on the timeline, including the public, we want to award the contract by the end of November and begin the project initiation at the beginning of December, complete the community engagement process by the middle of February, identify the catalyst projects for assessment by the middle of March, have a draft report delivered to us by the middle of May, and a final report by June. Does anyone guess?
Just a comment. I want to commend these two women and their staff, the people that worked on this. This is a really good document. It must have taken endless hours to put this together. I read this thing from stem to stern last night, and I learned a lot about the city of Hagerstown that I did not know before. So congratulations on a really good piece of work.
Any other questions or comments about the RFP? I agree. I know that it's taken a while to get together, especially because we asked you to get more stakeholder feedback, but I think in the end, that will give us a better product. Mr. Brubaker, you're looking like you want to say something.
Yes, I think the community participation has strengthened this, made it a little bit more on the implementation side and a little more specific. It was a good document to begin with, and thank you for coordinating with the community. And I also want to thank Delegate Donahue for getting this assistance for Hagerstown. You know, our emphasis, this council, has been on investment and how to do it wisely, and I think this will move us along, so.
Could I pick up on one?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I want to pick up on what Marty said there and thank John Donahue. This took a lot of effort. He had put a lot of time and effort into this, so we can be grateful for this money to help us out of our problems. But I wanted to particularly compliment you all on the ability to allow people an opportunity to come in and express their interest in what should be in this document. Ryan Daultridge has come to me, and he's told me he has a lot of ideas for downtown. Rich Daultridge has told me he's got a lot of ideas for downtown, and several other people who spend a great deal of time thinking about downtown have stated they would like to have some forum to express their interests and the projects that they think are important for downtown. And this is the perfect forum and should really come up with some great ideas for economic development, not only throughout Hagerstown, but specifically downtown. So, good. Thank you.
And I think rightly so. You've identified community engagement as a very integral part of this process so that everybody is on board with the shared vision that we all have and how we're going to get to achieve that vision. I think that's the key, too, is the implementation aspect of this. Mr. Alshire?
I think that one of the key components of any type of plan such as this is going to be not just, and I've said this before, not just an assessment of what exists downtown as sort of a single entity, but what exists within the singular spaces downtown. I continue to believe that we need to identify and bolster our sort of anchors within each of our blocks. I still firmly believe that we need to get rid of some of the bad and ugly that we have. And, you know, one of the integral pieces, as you've identified in the downtown context, isn't just simply whether a building is occupied or vacant or what type of use is in there, but whether what is occupying that space is a good representation of what we want downtown. And I think that that's a harsh but key element that's going to require some frank discussion, and possibly, at the end of the day, some degree of legislative action to address improving those conditions.
Any other comments or questions? Miss Nye, Mr. Metzner? Okay, well, let's move forward. Thank you very much.
Exciting project. It's a good opportunity for us.
Yeah, so it'll be on for approval next week. We'll have that on our agenda. Next item on our agenda is the requests from the Maryland Theater for city funding support. We have coming to the table Mr. Benito Vatalana, sorry, I have a name that gets butchered myself, so apologize for that, and Mr. Rich Daultridge. And Jessica Green, would you like to come up? No? I know you're the one, the workhorse over there at the theater, for sure, so we appreciate you being here. I'll turn it over to you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for allowing us the chance to meet before the council. We appreciate all the support the city has given to the Maryland Theater for not only the years that I've been involved as a volunteer, but many years prior to that. I think because of that, we look forward to a continued positive relationship, and you've always been kind to come over and interact with us on the activities at the theater. We want to keep you informed. Just one small note, the city was very involved in helping this theater acquire a new speaker system, sound system. I got to listen to that today, and it's absolutely incredible. And so I know we're going to invite you over. The theater's probably never sounded in that way as good as it is today. In fact, we heard that it's a state-of-the-art system, probably the best in the region of any theater, so I'm excited to, we'll be inviting the whole city council to, so thank you very much. We appreciate the time. Rich and I wanted to meet with you to talk about some projects we have at the Maryland Theater. We capture it as a 24-month capital infrastructure improvement program. The theater's going to celebrate its 100th anniversary in September of 2015, and so we're really excited about that. There's a lot of things that we've done to prepare that way, but this presentation today is mostly focused, let's see if I can get that right. I want to make sure I can move this forward. Do I point it? I think Aaron's coming up here. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, it's really today just to inform everyone today about the business status of Maryland Theater very briefly, but focus on 24-month capital infrastructure improvement program, and to really give you an overview of some of the near-term initiatives that we have, and maybe just begin a dialogue to determine what measure of involvement the city might want to have with the Maryland Theater moving forward. Quick business snapshot of the theater, we've really been involved in a 32-month restructuring process of our business, and I just tried to grab some numbers. 2012, we had over 78,000 people that came to Maryland Theater as a patron. 2013, we already see a 16 percent increase over last year. We're actually, we're being really better at financial stewardship and better business stewardships. Financially, we have a very positive cash flow over last year. We're already surpassed what we did last year, so we're very pleased about that. As far as break even, we're above the break even costs from a financial position. The theater's always challenged financially, not from a day-to-day, but from an infrastructure. There's a lot of things that happen at the theater that causes an old building, and no matter how much you try to budget, if you had the money to put in a budget, those costs are expensive because the theater itself is older. We really focus on strong partnerships with businesses and local arts organizations, really working to develop our diversification, our presentations, and really expanding our relationships with the students of Washington County, launching a theater student arts initiative called the Inspired Program, where, so I may remember, we brought a Chinese dance troupe to the theater. I think that was a very early part of your tenure here. They're actually coming back in January, so we're very excited about that. We're a location of one of three in the country that they'll come in before they go on to Washington, DC, so it's very wonderful to have that type of art come into our community for our students. We always focused the last couple of years on building community theater, and we always focus as local arts first. We want to always improve the access to the local arts organizations, and here is just an idea of what we've done to support local arts. We've discounted, secured nonprofit arts groups' access to the Maryland Theater, working very closely with the Maryland Symphony Orchestra, the Barbara Ingram School. We've turned the theater into a living classroom. Every day, students are performing on the Maryland Theater stage, and that's a very exciting opportunity for students in Washington County. Community concerts and others, and just to give you a pitch for our revenue, we collect from that local arts-first approach is, it's about 10 to 12 percent of our overall revenue, which means we have to build the other percentage out of our commercial rental fees and performances that we bring in. Looking forward, we've surveyed clients to look for types of entertainment, and we've been engaged in discussions with different people. In 2014 and other years out, we are building a better relationship with promoters and managers. Jessica Green has been very instrumental in that, to build that path, working with the, we created a performance committee. That performance committee is one of six, seven individuals, and every month, they meet to discuss future performances and acts, and it's young and old people on that board that sit together to look for what we can do to improve the people who come to the theater.
Well, maybe you were just about to say, but can you talk about the challenge that comes along with trying to get those big names?
Absolutely. In fact, that's really it. The key thing is, when you get a big name, everyone would like to have a big name, and we would, too, but that big name is usually anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000.
Up front.
It's six to nine months' lead to secure them. So on a budget that we have, that we just try to make sure we're covering our bills and keep the theater running, trying to tap into $50,000 to $70,000 to secure a name for someone who's not going to be there six to nine months, and then be at 100 percent risk that that's a break even or positive show is a challenge.
It's really risk capital is what that is.
It's very much so. So we would want to do that. We're looking at names, we're working in that area, but it's a challenge, to be quite honest with you. So at some point in the future, our hope is to create a performance budget, that we'd actually have some money that's in that budget that we can tap in to secure that name and fill it back as we sell tickets. But not take it from our bottom line right now that we need.
I had talked about this last week to an individual, and then I talked to another individual, and I said, okay, now, how could the city and the county help?
Sure.
A one-time help to get it started, to bring in a big name, a name that we hope that everybody would attend, okay? And that's putting money into the coffer from wherever, okay, and for the county to then put the same amount in. And that's food for thought. I really think, look, I think the Maryland Theater is the jewel, okay? And I've said that. I personally feel if we got this to where it should be and to bring entertainment in, that I think it could more than help what we need to get it started down here. But we need those big names. And forever, I've talked about big names. I've talked to board members, and, but we're in the black. I don't care if you're in the black. You're not bringing in the big names. You're not bringing the feet in that we need to be on these streets with now businesses that we have that are opening up. So food for thought, could we at least perhaps see and contact the county if there is some way that we can pull some money from somewhere?
Well, it sounds like what you're saying, Penny, is that it would be good for economic development if we worked with the county to put some seed money in a performance budget. That's what I hear.
The county has hotel motel money that's set aside to foster economic development.
Bottom line is, though, I would say I agree with Penny, and I believe that's part of what we're doing here today that was coming up with thought processes.
Well, yeah. I mean, we're there to help as far as renovation, but I think this other part is so significant that, you know, we need to really now capture what we've got.
Penny's absolutely right. When the theater's dark, we're not accomplishing anything for downtown economic development. If we could get 120, 130 dates a year where that theater's basically filled up, it would keep the restaurants downtown alive and well, which, as you know, is a problem in downtown. She is absolutely right. We need to look at some way to initiate fun, and then some way to keep the fun filled so that we can get the next big name and the next big name.
And I appreciate that. We completely agree. We're glad we're in the black and positive for the year, but at the same time, it doesn't tell us where we want to be moving forward. We believe the experience of the theater by bringing bigger names will continue to help grow. We want it to be better stewards of the theater, and I think that's where we've gotten to now, which I think people can feel comfortable and confident that any money provided to the theater will be executed and used in a proper way. There's a lot of oversight amongst the board and individuals involved.
Right. And perhaps a revolving, this might be something to think about, revolving fund, because after all, if it's a successful draw, the money would go back in the fund for another use.
Correct, correct.
And we're not risking the taxpayers' money. We're taking a risk, but it's a worthwhile risk. But there would be payback, and then, you know, we'd have to have a good marketing plan.
Absolutely.
But it could be a revolving fund.
And a very good promoter.
Person next to my right is one of the good experiences in marketing as well, and that's what we want to work with, Rich and others. So we really would like to talk, and this is why today, we want to introduce a couple concepts. We know people have talked about it, but we want to kind of put it in for us. We're open to further discussions. And we really feel the theater's full, the streets downtown are full, it's good community. We want to, it's all about the experience of the theater as part of a beautiful downtown, and we want people to enjoy being there. And the other thing, too, just to let you know, we focus on, we're selling theater tickets. We're now partnering with other local arts groups. We're actually selling tickets to the Academy Theater and community concerts, so we're reaching out to other organizations and helping them sell tickets for their activities. So we just want to let you know, the theater's not only in it for itself and working, but we're working for everybody in the arts, and we want to do everything we can to help. I've laid out here four areas that we're focusing on as far as restoring capital infrastructure improvement in addition to a performance budget. It's really, the purpose is to improve the patron experience. So when we talk about the entertainment, absolutely, but you've already made another investment on the sound, that's part of the experience. And now, the other thing is, there's going to be, another part is replacing the seating at the Maryland Theater. The theater's seating is about 35-plus years old, very hard, ripped, torn, and we've got some ideas how we'd like to replace that to improve when people do come to the theater, they're not uncomfortable the entire time they're there. Replacing the HVAC system, and then ultimately, in year 2015, we really feel we want to continue moving forward to a cultural arts center initiative. It's bringing all the internal requirements to upgrade the theater, but ultimately, is to build this cultural arts center that we can bring all the arts together and collaborate better for the arts and have a place where people can meet and facilitate arts better. So I laid out a 2015, 13 to 15 timeline. There are several initiatives that we have. We've already received proposals for an HVAC system. Quite honestly, the system is very old that we have. Quite honestly, the system is very old that we have in the basement. We want to bring it to the ceiling. Last year, we spent over $30,000 in service calls just to make sure it was running for events. If it breaks down, we're seriously in jeopardy of... So, we need to move on that. The two other projects are a seating project, which go in hand with a lighting project that we have, as well as a restoration of the ceiling. If we've replaced the seating, there's a lot of repair work we want to do to the ceiling at the same time because all the seats will be there, it'll be better to do. And then ultimately, down the road, we want to talk to you about a cultural arts center and really coming forward to our 100th anniversary in September 2015. I'd like to, at this time, turn over to Rich, who's done a lot of support work to volunteer and help the theater adjust its next project.
Does everyone have the packet with the seats in it at all? No? Do you have to pass that? Basically, what I did was sit down with the theater and talk a little bit about some of the experiences that we had with Lettersburg Cinemas, and it was very similar with gutting, filling cracks, and resurfacing concrete, and then the whole seating. And obviously, marketing is a big deal long-term for the Maryland Theater, but I think first and foremost, what I was trying to focus on to help them out was basically, what is the end product of the Maryland Theater? What is the experience? We know there's no room for VIP seats, Councilmember Metzner, but, you know, we're going to do our best to give a good experience. And so, what I did in this document is basically mapped out some of the recommendations. We have to refinish the concrete, which is grinding it, filling the cracks, repainting, replacement and respacing of seats. Those seats are very, very close together. And I have some standards here additional below. We want to install aisle lighting. It seems like a little thing, but it's actually a presentation piece, this simple aisle lighting that goes up, LED lights on the main floor and the balcony sections, and then replace aisle carpeting with something that is, you know, not too expensive, but something that does refinish it and sort of finishes the space. The biggest thing, the biggest investment is going to be the seats, and we did some CAD work with the vendor who's doing the sound there at the theater, and we are going to lose approximately 150 chairs if we make more room, 130 of those on the main floor and 20 decrease on the balcony. In my presentation to the Maryland Theater Board, again, just sort of giving my experiences, is I explained to them that you very, very rarely sell out the Maryland Theater, very, very rarely sell out a movie in the movie industry. So, while that 130 and 20 seem like a lot, at the end of the day, it really comes down to what they call per cap, a per cap seating ticket and a per cap concession. Those two numbers, I'm sort of working with the theater as well, just to look at the financials of that. Those seats, based on how many seats are there, are not going to make a difference, in my opinion. But you are going to lose some seating basically to increase the row separation from 34 to 39 inches. And again, it might seem like a little, but that's quite a bit in the main floor. And then there will be three rows total that will decrease that come up with that 130. Increase seat spacing, a width from 20 to 21 inches. That's basically the seat now. The seats that they manufacture today are just a little bit wider, so you are going to get a little more comfort just because you're getting a more modern seat. In the main and balcony sections, again, approximately one chair decrease per row with 10 or more chairs. Rows with less than 10 chairs, not significant. And then, increase seat height from 29 inches to 34 inches, 36 inches. This is sort of the support on your back. This will not, by the way, restrict the line of sight to the stage. We did some research on that, and that's not a problem. But again, it's a wider seat, it's more spacing between your seat and the seat in front of you, and then also the seat back is much more comfortable. So, these are all standard options in modern theater seating. Chair options include armrest, backseat, aisle. There are a million different combinations of what you can spend on that. I will say that one of the things that we were looking at is striking the right balance between restoration. Obviously, the Maryland Theater is a beautiful facility, but also comfort. So, there's that balance that we're looking for. One of the restoration sides, while the end caps, we found, are not historically significant necessarily, we could actually reuse those and save some money, and so we actually can... And it's actually a little bit cheaper to reuse the existing than to buy new end caps as an option. And then, obviously, ADA options for armrest and chair removal. We have to make sure that's available and work through. So, this is sort of my memo to the board. We tweaked it a little bit. And then your packet is the CAD drawing with the current seat layout. It's not the adjustments. And what else? There's also one seat option here, just to give you an idea of a pretty nice seat. This is, I would say, a mid-level seat. It's not going to be your plastic back. It's with a wood back with a wood side, but again, we can actually restore the end caps. But there's the dimensions there, and then you could actually decide to do new end caps that are period style, but you don't have to, so.
How many seats are there now?
1,300.
1,300, that's what I had down.
1,370.
I will say, too, that we looked at, you know, coming from the movie industry, we had some other ideas that didn't work, like stadium seating. Stadium seating absolutely did not work. We knew that as soon as we did the dimensions, but it would have been a better presentation. But slope flooring is what it is, and you actually have stadium seating on the upper floors, which is nice, so.
You sort of justingly said no VIP seating, but aren't the box seats, in a way, VIP seating? And would you go for, you know, people paying more, putting in better seats, or what you thought that?
Yeah. 100%. I mean, I think there's the seats that are there on the side, we talked a little bit about it. There's not that many of them either, so it won't be a huge investment. But yes, something that is a VIP experience that people that... I mean, we've experienced it at the cinemas, that people pay for it. It is a much better experience, and that's sort of what all this comes down to, is a better experience all the way around.
And that's it. That's even the sound system. I found out that we're now about 99% coverage in the theater for hearing, which is wonderful. We had not had that even close to it. So, we feel every step we take, we want to make a significant incremental, significant improvement on the experience, and so we don't have to go back and say we wish we did it better. We're really trying to do something of significant that people will have a better experience and want to be at another event at the Maryland Theater. So, what we had today, we appreciate the time. This is the first time, I know we've met in the past through a tour of the facility, to the city council, to mayor. We wanted to at least say, between now and September 15th, we feel our significant, it's a significant window to make improvements along the way for the theater for a long-term, but at the same time on the performance budget, but also for, in 2015, to celebrate our 100th and really cast a larger vision for where the theater is to the downtown, for the community, for the future. We'd love to work in that type of dialogue with you and figure out ways how we can move forward together. So, we're at your disposal, really.
Is it your expectation of the four items listed, or your hope that one, or two, or three, or four of the items would be completed by that timeframe?
Good question. I appreciate it. Good question. Definitely the first three, and then the conceptual project of a cultural arts center. We'd like to have that concept design done. There's a lot of ideas...
But not completed, not construction completed by...
No. Just, we'd like to go into design phase and work with some design engineers to look at what would that facility look like, the front end. We feel there's some commercialization of some top floors that can help offset revenue needs of the theater. There's some really good ideas out there of what we can do, as well as we want to work with the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. There are going to be additional space that they'll want to use. There's a downtown venue where we can sit maybe 750,000 people in a ballroom setting, like for an event downtown, so we want to keep people downtown. So, there's a lot of ideas we have. We'd like to work with someone to go through that design phase, though, and come up with that rendering. But again, we don't have the budget for that. We're looking at ways, how can we move forward? And that's why today, we felt we could at least introduce it to you and then maybe develop that path of discussion.
And I think I heard you say this, but it's not in this order or in the presentation. Once you do the seat, or excuse me, the internal restoration and even the HVAC, which could involve a lot of banging around, before you did the seats?
Yes.
I think you wanted to put those in last, after you were done banging around in the roof and...
Working with the coordination of timing of, we have to look at, we have events, we can't take out the HVAC in the middle of our, we're going to our busy season.
Yeah.
So, there's some dead periods between January, February, and then the summer quiet areas that we can actually do some work that would not interrupt the flow of programming.
But the sequence, would the seats be last in the sequence?
Seats would be last because we'd want to take the seats out to get the ceiling done.
Right.
And then, so the seats and the ceiling would be done the same time.
That's what I thought I heard. Yeah, because it's not quite listed that way, so I wanted to make sure that was... Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. First, this is a really good presentation. Thank you. I think everybody gets the idea correctly, that this council's very much for the Maryland Theater, and we want it to succeed. I think the public needs to understand, we don't own the Maryland Theater. It's a private entity, but the better it does, the better downtown's going to do. Rich, I'd like to personally thank you for your interest. I know in some sense, this is a competitor of yours, so this is a really selfless thing to do, and since you learned the theater business from the ground up, you can bring a lot of great ideas and thoughtfulness to how to make this a better thing, a more workable thing for the city of Hagerstown, so thank you for that. And lastly, the artwork on the front of the theater is incredible, so thank you. It was fabulous.
I think it is important to note that both of you are volunteering. Mr. Benito, you're a volunteer president of the board, is that right?
Correct.
And you're volunteering your services for the good of the cause, so to speak. So, I think that's important to note as well, and I concur with the thanks and appreciation that Mr. Monson expressed for your work on making this happen. And I think I agree that the city is ready to be a strong partner.
Let you know, the theater in its past couple of years has always worked towards a profitability market. We just, we simply want to run a profitable business, even though we're not, we want to be positive, and all the relationships we're building in the community are to help the arts, so we discount them at least 50% to help the local arts really succeed. And now, we're selling their tickets, so we really want to be a partner in the arts. We feel we have a great venue for the community, and we, even though we're our own association, we really operate, we feel, as a community asset, and that's why the doors are open to be completely engaged at every level with everyone.
Well, any problem with that word profit in quotes, because it all goes back into the building, or it goes back into necessary, so it's not a profit theoretically, because you're taking care of depreciation, you're taking care of marketing, and perhaps enriching the facility, if to the extent you have profit. So, I don't think it's, you want programs to be in the black, so you can do that. And I think that, Dawn, I think that Rich probably realizes to extent it becomes a regional draw, you get more people coming to the Hagerstown area, it helps all the facilities in Hagerstown.
And here's a real...
Like shopping centers where there's several anchors, you know?
Well, and just a simple thing like Windown, Jessica and her staff brought a team in from a band from Frederick, and we found people that we had not recognized come to Windown from outside our community. So, what we are trying to do, we're bringing bands from outside the area, even they're smaller groups. We are reaching out beyond, and I know we're working with the city to create a video that's going to send out to, a video clip to go out to entertainers and promoters around the country to bring entertainment. We're going to introduce the theater in downtown to promoters through a video clip, and then that's how we're going to start to engage at a professional level to bring better entertainment to the community.
And what's interesting about that, and this is a little bit off the topic, but recently, when the Food Network was in town, and I had some correspondence between the producers of the show, and they commented to me, "What a great downtown we have." And so, I think when you're living here and you see all, and I think this goes to something Mr. Alshar points out all the time, we're always looking at our warts, but we don't really celebrate all of the successes that we have, like the fact that we have almost 20 restaurants now in the first two blocks of the square, where all the great thing is going on at the Maryland Theater. So, it's really important to kind of stop and smell the roses every once in a while, and I think certainly the Maryland Theater is one of our biggest and hopefully will become an even more flourishing rose in our downtown, so.
In addition to that, Benito, I can't wait to see you doing your first busted board fundraiser for the theater.
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, he's going to be on a skateboard?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh. Only if you do, Dawn, I want to see that.
Skateboards around here.
Hey, I'll do it if you'll do it, Mayor.
Well, it'll probably be an entertainment, for sure. We should definitely charge. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to continuing the conversation.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Rich, thank you for what you've done with Lettersburg Cinemas. All right, the next item on our agenda is the reunion and remembrance. Hagerstown honors her Civil War veterans. It will be taking place this Saturday, and here to talk to you... Who's that?
Are you able to take that Alexander House?
Sure. Yes, we can certainly, we are a little ahead on our agenda, so we will skip down to item number eight on the agenda. Hello, welcome to the table.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Mr. James Carmichael, and Mr. Carmichael is the investor and principal, I guess, of Housing Preservation, Inc., and as the memo indicates, his firm is in the process of acquiring the Alexander House property on the square. And he wanted an opportunity to meet with you and to explain a little bit about his conceptual plans or vision for the property, as well as to have an initial discussion about a potential pilot agreement. And I included a copy of the current agreement with the memo, and the city's legal staff have been reviewing that, and I don't believe we have a finding on that for this evening, but they are in the process of reviewing the current agreement. So, Mr. Carmichael, if you wanted to just share a little bit about your plans for the Alexander House and that?
Sure. Hi, how is everybody? Good. So, I am based in Memphis, Tennessee, and I run a development company. I do work basically as a nonprofit and as a for-profit developer. I've been in the United States now for 13 years. I originally, I grew up in England.
We couldn't tell.
I was going to say, hence the accent, so, yeah, I run a development company, and I own and operate about 21 different projects. It's about 3,500 units, and I specialize in project-based Section 8 housing, which is Alexander House. And of the 21 projects that I own and operate, 18 of them are strictly designated for senior citizens, so that's 62 and older. And then, the other three communities basically are for families in between the ages of 18 and 62. So, I acquire projects basically throughout the United States. I have a community that I own in Baltimore, which is a senior high-rise building. It's an old historic hotel, which is extremely comparable to that of Alexander House, and I have projects basically all the way from Connecticut, New Jersey, all the way basically to Los Angeles, California. And I'd be more than happy to provide you whatever information that you would like to see on myself and my organization as we move forward. So, we are set up, we have, I have four acquisition guys that work in my main corporate office, and obviously, we go out and we try to acquire additional projects that we can add to the portfolio, and therefore, then own them, operate them, manage them, and make improvements to them. I also have an in-house development company, and so what we do is, we use low-income housing tax credits basically to renovate a particular apartment complex. So, the plan for Alexander House is the same plan that I have for the projects in Baltimore and other properties around the country, and that's, I go in, I acquire the apartment complex. Typically, the apartment complexes that I buy, 80% of them are already up and running apartment complexes, so they're already, you know, what we call turnkey. There's nothing much that needs to be done to them. A comparable property that I can describe to you that would be, you know, stereotypical of what I own is on three doors down from Alexander House... of what I own is, on three doors down from Alexander House, you have an apartment complex, which is managed by, and owned by one of my partners, um, in an, in another transaction, basically in New Jersey. It's called St. Elizabeth Court. It's 110 units, and it's project-based Section 8 for seniors. And, it, that's owned by Michael's Development, by Mike Levitt, and it, Mike Levitt manages one of my projects in New Jersey. So, you have two very different properties that have taken two very different paths over the years, and you have a property which is a great property that, you know, that Mike owns and runs, and he's owned it for, you know, I think he was the original developer, and, and it's basically full, it's 110 units of seniors over 62, and it's well-managed cuz they're a great organization, they manage one of my buildings. And, um, then you have a property like Alexander House, and, um, and then you have Alexander House, which has been managed by a, not a local nonprofit, uh, who have had the very best of intentions, who I, I believe personally, you know, seem like sincere individuals, but I think they've floundered basically because of their inexperience in operating senior, senior housing. So what, what you've had happen over the years is, you've had an apartment complex that has gone on the wrong trajectory. So you have an apartment complex like, you know, St. Elizabeth Court, that's, you know, steadily improved, and it's got great tenants, and it's not a nuisance basically to the city, and then you've had an apartment complex like Alexander House for, you know, a number of different reasons that's taken the opposite path. Those, those missteps and those mismanagement, you know, processes that have taken place are very, very apparent to me, I know why that is. Um, for you guys, it's probably, and I've heard from John, it's kind of been a, a little bit of a sore spot, and it's been a little bit of a source of contention, and especially with a, a very beautiful building, basically in the heart of downtown, and I see that, I sat, I've sat there at that coffee shop and had coffee, and I thought, bloody hell, this is a beautiful building, you know, what, what's gone wrong? And, and I know what's gone wrong. But I'm not gonna sit here and tell you, and I can if you like me to, but I don't think you want me to sit here and talk about the inner workings of an apartment complex. But my plan is, and I know, and I have a game plan in order to start correcting the loitering outside the front of the building. I know how to fill, you know, the vacant retail space, you know, I know how to, you know, fix basically the, uh, the, the tenants that have, the undesirable tenants that have been put into the building versus tenants that are 62 and older. Um, I know how to fix a, you know, a decaying facade. Um, I know how to make the building look like a nice, beautiful, historic hotel, and also be senior housing at the same time. But I've also listened to John, and, you know, John and I have had a couple of hours of in-depth conversation about what the city would really like to do with regards to the, you know, uh, de, removing affordable housing basically from the downtown area, so I-
And, and for clarity, deconcentration of-
Deconcentration, yeah, that was the word.
Project-based Section 8 properties in the court, uh, and one option that we talked about was, at some point in this, in the future, could that property be moved elsewhere? And, uh, to, to meet a, a long-term city goal of deconcentration and a diversity of income of our downtown residents.
Yeah. So that was, that's the conversation, and, um, and, yeah, as you know, anything's possible with money and time, isn't it? So, uh, and real estate is, is just a function of underwriting and, you know, resources and, and time, basically. Um, you know, and I know how to make that, you know, that idea come to fruition. It's a challenging dream, I'll be very honest with you, and John and I have spoke about that, you know, over a couple of hour conversation. Um, it's, it would be a challenging project to get off the ground. Can it be done? Yes, yes, it can be done. But, um, but anyway, John wanted me to come, you know, he wanted me to meet you all, and, um, you know, this is, you know, this is my, you know, my third, you know, my fourth trip to Hagerstown, um, you know, over the last kind of, you know, 60 to 90 days, and John said he wanted me to come, he called me last week, I was in Mexico with my wife on the beach, I said, okay, I'm, I'm coming, okay? So, um, so I'm here, you know, and, um-
So your plans you're telling us are, one, an improvement of what we have now-
Yeah.
And two, do I hear what I'm anticipating, what you're saying is, you anticipate this to be senior citizen housing-
Yeah.
-versus the, the mix that is there now?
Yeah. Specifically, s, the building was, the building was put in place as senior housing-
Right.
And, and, and that's the program I believe in.
Right, that's what we believed in too, until it changed.
But what you've got, what happens is, people, the, the management, management companies are allowed to put in disabled, there's a rule, and it says, it's senior and/or disabled, okay? The disabled cap is 10%, okay? And if you know how to operate an apartment complex, you, you stick to that 10%, because basically, as a senior developer, I want seniors in my building, because I'm not set up to manage disabilities. And the disabilities come in many shapes and forms, mental, physical-
Correct.
-alcoholic, drug-
Yep.
And so there's a, there's a lot of different kind of disabilities. So, I am an affordable housing developer, I am not set up to manage tenants with disabilities, nor do senior citizens want to live in a building with, with, with disabled tenants.
If I can ask, to your knowledge, did they, this current board of directors have the power to have the type of housing that you're envisioning? Because when I met with them a number of years ago, they told me they were, it was illegal for them to limit it to senior citizen housing.
It, it's not illegal, okay? I, I work in a very gray area.
It depends on your funding, doesn't it?
Well, I work, fair housing is a very complex issue, okay? And, um, there are rules in place basically to prevent you just specifically going after tenants of a certain age. I can't do that. However, there are, the HUD basically wants to see 10%. So, you can rewrite your tenant selection criteria and practices basically to provide the 10% cap, and there's guidance on that, okay?
Okay.
And just so everyone knows, the current mix is 70% disabled and 30% senior.
Approximately, and that's from discussions that we've had with, uh, folks, uh, who run the Alexander House and in discussions with Mister Carmichael.
Correct. So what, what you've had take, what you've had take place is, it's easy for a unsophisticated management company to fill the building with disabled residents than it is to fill them basically with senior citizens. So, as you all know, taking, doing the right thing is not always the easiest path to take. And, if, if you have an unsophisticated management team, and they're given the opportunity to go, a disabled resident or a senior resident, they often take the path which is the easiest. And the disabled tenant has been the easiest way to fill the building. That's because you haven't had a sophisticated management team basically saying, okay, onsite manager, you're not to do this, here's, here's the language basically, here are the boundaries that you need basically in order to operate this building. Well, it, what they've done is, they've sent themselves onto this kind of death spiral, um, and the building basically loses money, um, because you have tenants that move in and move out, um, so the building becomes, you know, less and less profitable, and then it's more of a, it's a downward spiral basically from there. So it's kind of a, it's a death spiral. So what, what, what happens is, is, you're not gonna see improvements overnight, you know? I can't just come in and say, okay, 70% tenants, I'm gonna take you somewhere else. That's not gonna happen. But what you can do is, as you have natural attrition basically in the tenant base, and you, you raise the screening criteria and the bar, okay, and you instruct management that these are the rules and these are the screening practices, um, and based on that 10% cap, eventually basically that tide starts to change. So, they, I, I believe that the board are genuine, and I know, and I know that this has been a, a source of contention, and I believe that they're honest, and I believe that they have the best intention. I believe that they're just inexperienced, and that inexperienced has led them to make very simple mistakes, and they didn't know that they were doing it. So, and those, for, and a developer like myself with 21 different projects, you know, I live and breathe this day-to-day, this is all I've done for the last, you know, 12, 13 years, to me, it's very, it's very easy. So, the short-term items. Are you gonna see a vast improvement to the building, you know, within 30 days? No, you're not. But you will see, you know, gentle improvements, will you see cooperation from a good neighbor? Yes, you will, hence I'm here, you know?
How did you find out about the Alexander House?
We contacted them directly. That's, you know, that's what I'm set up to do.
Are you aware of the current pilot with the current ownership?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yeah.
How would, what would a pilot look like in terms of what you're asking us to look into?
I would like to extend this pilot, so, I, I don't wanna take income basically away from your base, that's not what I'm asking for, but what, what my overall plan is over the next 12 to 18 months, and that is to apply for low-income housing tax credits. I, I've just applied for low-income housing tax credits at the 227-unit building in Baltimore, which I'm going, which I'm going to get. As part of that redevelopment, um, my plan is to do $35,000 a unit in rehab at that building in Baltimore, uh, and I'm working with the Maryland State Agency with that now, and, and the Baltimore HUD office. So, the plan would be to, um, if, if you guys were agreeable to give me the pilot, what that will do, and extend this existing pilot, it will, it will keep those taxes basically, um, at that number, is about $21,000 a year, okay? If the, if I'm successful winning 9% tax credits basically on, not, on the 2014 QAP or 2015, and I'm able to rehabilitate the project, I will need the pilot because the way in which the, the mechanics basically of the underwriting work, you, you have to create basis, and it's very technical, so, but let's say that, just, just, just play round numbers with me for a minute, just say that, let's say that the taxes, when I put low-income housing tax credits on there, the taxes go from 20 to $40,000, okay? That $20,000 basically that would increase your tax base is $20,000 of less annual debt service that I can leverage basically to invest into rehabilitation of the asset. So, $20,000 in annual debt service, round numbers, might be half a million dollars or $10,000 a unit, basically an additional rehab that I can put into the building, or I can put into the retail space, or, you know, amenities basically for the tenants. So, the pilot is extremely common, basically, and tax abatements are extremely common with regards to affordable housing in other parts of the country. Um, you know, you, obviously, it was issued, you know, nearly, obviously, three decades ago, um, you know, and I, I'm here to see if, if there's a way that I can extend that, extend that pilot, so.
Is, is there a term similar to other housing developments that we have experienced with their agreements for a subsidy that is set to expire for this entity?
In terms of HUD's-
Yeah, in other words, uh, using example of the, the development out across from M.K. Dow, you know, it had a specific timeframe, and then it was able to re-up, so to speak, uh, or, uh, PoA, which took over Washington Gardens, which was not, in my opinion, overly positive, uh, experience, um, and, and one that I regret voting for. And what I don't want to be is, is duped into that scenario again. And I think that we, as a council, need to understand a couple of things. One is, is there some type of, of term associated with the current subsidy and the current agreement with HUD that is set to expire, which would drive this back to, uh, simply marketable units, the way that others have occurred? Number two is, how is this resolution that we adopted separate from the agreements that are made between that entity and, uh, those loan originations? Because while there may be specific criteria that that loan applicant makes to receive those credits through that federal process for the, the, uh, population in which it rents to, uh, those are those agreements between that private and that separate public entity, not what we agreed to in 1978 with that private entity and this public body. Uh, so I think that those are, are two things that, that we need to understand, uh, right out of the gate. And number three is, I would like an understanding of, uh, where we are at with our current pilot in terms of how that entity has made payment, uh, over the course of the, you know, several decades, uh, that it, uh, it was required to pay. Uh, because clearly, when you read the resolution, it says, and it doesn't include the figure in here, it just says that the city and the applicant are gonna agree to it, uh, and, and, you know, that, that there's gonna be some figure in the budget.
Actually, it says, "The said payment in lieu of taxes shall be equal to the sum of the city taxes of whatsoever nature or kind, including real estate taxes and personal property taxes, but not limited thereto, which will be payable upon the commercial storerooms and/or offices located in the said building, or which shall become located in the said building." I take that to mean that whatever is paid in, in taxes on the commercial portions of the building, you multiply that by two, or you, you take that amount, and that's what the amount of the pilot is.
They're actually overpaying. I have the calculations.
Well, to be honest with you, in my search for data, we haven't found that they've paid anything on the pilot. And so that's one of the questions that we need to get to the bottom to, uh, to the bottom of, because currently, we don't know if they've paid in 35 years.
I can tell you they've paid, 100%. And, and, and if you let me explain, the environment that I work in is very regulated, okay? And at the end of each fiscal year, um, the Department of Housing and Urban Development makes, uh, makes every property with project-based assistance go out and get a third-party auditor to come in basically and audit those books basically, and then provide an audit that gets submitted to HUD. And we've verified basically those numbers basically on that audit, and I have them on my laptop. So, I'm, I'm, I'm 99% confident that they've been paying on it.
I mean, when, when you read that the, that the mix is now approaching 70, 30, you know, and you read an agreement that, that is very specific that says, uh, into an apartment for elderly, I mean, it doesn't say elderly and, and other segments of the population. I, I think that we need an understanding of council of what this current document says before we go making some agreement with an entirely separate entity, uh, under what may or may not be entirely different set of parameters. Uh, and I think that we need a clear understanding, when we talk about deconcentration, and this was a big part of the discussion, on the, 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 the residential units across from Dow, uh, the ones that, you know, that, that PoA took over, was that, that notion of deconcentration, re-upping, so to speak, in, into those federal programs, uh, does specifically that, it, it re-ups that concentration. And I think we need, you know, we, we can have folks make us all the promises that they want, with due respect, uh, but, but, but my experience, you know, in, in a number of those cases, is, that is not what we're seeing.
My concern is that, I know, having talked with many of the business folks and stakeholders in the community, there's interest in putting this, this property back on the market, so to speak, and making it, uh, a taxable property altogether. I think my concern is that, when I was less than a year old, when this agreement was signed in 1978, uh, a conscious choice was made, uh, you know, in cooperation with the owners of this property, that we were gonna make subsidized housing the cornerstone of our downtown. And I think that is why we are in a situation that we're in when it comes to our downtown economy. For 20 years, we've been talking about, how do we get more people with disposable income to come downtown? You know, so I think we have to work toward an end which eventually re-privatizes, if you will, uh, this property, because, you know, there are some very marketable views at the top of that building, if nothing else.
Let me, let me say that, can I answer the gentleman's first question?
Please.
So, with regards to affordable housing and its term, okay? I, I have total control over that process, okay? As a developer, and as the owner of the building, and the agreement with, and the agreement with HUD, okay? And, the original term basically of the, um, what's referred to as the HAP contract, basically, that's the document basically that governs the Section 8 subsidy, that, that particular document was up, um, its 40-year term was up in 2019. Now, I, I requested to terminate that and re-execute that basically for 20 years. And I, and I did that because it's, it's part of what my goal is, and that is to preserve the affordability of the community, and therefore apply for low-income housing tax credits. Now, you know, that is something basically that is a- Now, you know, that is something, basically, that is a, you know, that's part of the federal regulation. And, you know, outside of the, outside of the pilot, basically, you know, I can execute that in, in 30 days, 60 days, basically, when I close that real estate, and that will, and that will move forward, and that will move forward. You know, I, I got into, into a conversation, basically, with regards to John, with, with John, and we spoke, basically, about maybe having that for a shorter period of time, based on, you know, the, the statement that you just ma, that you just made. So, you know, there's, you know, it, again, it goes back to that bigger picture, you know, argument, basically. Look, I can make that transaction work, I can achieve your, I can achieve your goals, but it's something that, it's something that's going to take a lot of lifting.
Well, part of the problem is, it goes back to this idea of community self-esteem. And in 1978, the big worry was, geez, we're just going to have this big old vacant hotel, and it's going to be rotting in our core, we might as well do something with it, and isn't this a great thing to do, is provide senior housing? And yes, it was.
Yeah.
But now, the senior population is different in 2013 than it was in 1978, for the most part, even though we may not experience it here, overall, elderly people are more wealthy, and they have a lot more options. So I think, again, my concern is that, a generation ago, there was a conscious decision to make subsidized housing the cornerstone of downtown, and I don't think that's the direction we should continue in. I appreciate what you are doing with your other projects and what you're saying that you would like to do with this, this project. I think that it warrants serious examination on our part in terms of what kind of agreements that we get into, or how we can work along with you, as the owner of the property, to perhaps transition. I don't think anyone wants to displace poor or elderly folks, or even disabled folks, but trying to find ways that we can achieve mutual goals, I think, would be beneficial.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If it wasn't 70% disabled and 30% elderly, and it was the other way around, would you have made that statement?
Probably not.
Yeah.
I probably would.
About 90%, I'd be the other way around.
Well, 90%. If it was 100%, like, you know, you know, Elizabeth Court, would you make the same statement, basically, with regards to that apartment complex?
I think we do, we still face the problem of, how do we get more people with disposable income in downtown? There may be 95 units in that building, but how efficient is it to have 95 units with elderly or disabled people, for that matter, where there's no open space in the immediate area surrounding, which is why we had the loitering problem that we do? You know, again, the concentration of the amounts of people who are receiving subsidized housing, I think, is the issue. It has nothing to do with the people themselves, but it's the, the idea that if, what's that whole idea of the definition of insanity, is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result.
But Dave, he's not proposing to do the same thing.
No, he's not.
Not proposing to do the same thing.
No. And honestly, I, when I look at the Brooks Building, that is totally senior, and that's how it will remain, and that's right in back of Potomac Towers, if you're familiar with this, okay?
I've driven them.
Okay, because, you know, I mean...
From the Housing Authority?
Yeah, right, right. And believe me, I'm, okay, I have a major problem when it came to, because when they did Walnut Towers, when I was a kid, I was told, that's going to be senior living, okay? And then that's when the federal government comes in and says, oh, you need to open this up to everybody. Those who are disabled have the right to come in here, too. That was the beginning of what we had as a downfall. What I'm hearing from you is, is that, and I don't know if you can achieve this, this is what I would like to see, as far as what would go in that building as being seniors, but the ones who are disabled, and this is going to sound harsh, but can they be critiqued? A lot of our problems now stem from those who actually do need a facility that now we cannot provide, because that is against all rules, and that's why we've got a lot of problems that are in these places, and they are on the street, and not being able to conform to what we would like to see them conform to.
Businesses, businesses are successful because of the leadership, basically, of those businesses, not because of the businesses themselves. You have leadership that's ineffective, and that's why you have a different view, basically, of the Alexander House versus Elizabeth Court. You have two completely polar views for two exactly the same businesses, and the, the differences there, basically, are, is the leadership, and basically, the decisions, basically, that, that the, the operators of that business make on a daily, weekly, annual basis. And it, you know, and it's, it's allowed you, basically, to, you know, arrive at that conclusion, and I, and I don't blame you.
Well, and I have to be honest with you, I'm looking at the 990 for the, for last year's Alexander House, and I'm looking at the members of the board, and these are all very well-established people in our community.
Yeah.
But what I'm sick and tired of is these very same people pointing their finger at the city and saying that we're the ones responsible for the demographic problems in downtown Hagerstown.
Well, that's absolutely ridiculous.
And that's, you know, that's what we hear constantly from the establishment of this community, is they're always looking to the city, how are you going to solve this problem? Well, we don't own the Alexander House, we don't own Elizabeth Court, we don't own a lot, much of the property in downtown, so we have to look for ways that we can work to make improvements in our community, especially in the downtown. But we, we also face this continuing challenge. Mr. Brubaker?
Yes, I guess people here are used to, and with all due respect, your presentation is good, and your attentions sound very good, but people come in saying something is going to occur in a certain way, and it doesn't materialize. And there's a whole bunch of instances of that here in Hagerstown.
I'm the sixth guy that's been through the door.
And I don't just mean, I don't just mean housing.
You sour grapes a little bit, and I don't blame you.
Right, I don't just mean housing, it's, it's, it's across the spectrum of proposals. And, and I came here, not as somebody that grew up here, and I see that very much, even before I arrived, this sorts of things happening. So I, I guess somehow I'd like to understand, I don't have to know your, your business plan or present it tonight, but some assurance that there will be capital investment, that there will be, that there is a plan for capital. Yes, it can happen in 30 days, I understand that, but that, that you, your business plan will generate enough income for you to do what you're talking about, to not just fill those commercial properties, which will help you do it, but, you know, what types of capital investment are you going to make? The units, the facade you talked about, is that achievable, is that something? Because if those things can be achieved, it would be, and you get the, up to a 90% of senior, I think that would be a big step forward.
Of course.
But I'd like to know if that if and how, and what guarantees there are, what guarantees there are in the various agreements with HUD and the state, that would make the capital, with all due respect, guarantee those capital investments.
And there lies the dilemma, and, look, I understand there's been people that sat in this chair before me and have asked exactly the same thing, and they never, you know, fulfilled, basically, their, you know, their business model, and, you know, you know, you guys, you know, I heard you regret your decision, basically, to, you know, to, to say, yeah, and, and, and of course, you know, hindsight's now, you know, much clearer, isn't it? So I, I don't blame you for being dubious, but I've given you a very, you know, a very good example, basically, of how affordable housing for seniors should be, basically, with the right leadership. I can't sit here and make guarantees to you, I can't, I can't. Without the pilot, the taxes, basically, full load at the acquisition price, basically, will go to 24 grand, they're three grand higher. So it's, you know, I've got a dozen things working through in my head now with regards to, how do I make you comfortable? I can't just, you know, pull a rabbit out of my hat right now, you know, and make that...
Nobody's asking you to do that, sir. We're expressing our...
So...
I appreciate you coming.
Yeah, I do, too.
Look, I want to be a good neighbor, you know? I know that the Alexander House, basically, has been a source of contention, and John explained it very well, and, you know, I want, you know, he wanted me to come and meet you, and I said, for sure, you know, I, I have 21 different projects, you know, I, I was speaking to a council lady, you know, in California while having my coffee, looking at the Alexander House, basically, about tenants, you know, I, you know, I want to be a good neighbor, you know, I don't want you guys to look at this building and say, bloody hell, we hate that building, and I'm the guy that owns it, you know? So it's, it's, it's not what I want out of my business or out of my apartment complex.
Mr. Mayor, it's perfect.
Can I go back to his question, though? Because I kind of dodged it a little bit. And the, the plan for low-income housing tax credits, basically, is, is a highly competitive process with 9% credits, okay? The, the probability of winning those credits is about a 40% chance of winning, okay? Now, now, I increase my probability of getting those tax credits because I own the building, and I can just keep resubmitting and resubmitting and submitting until I eventually get it. So once that takes place, and once that happens, once I'm successful, maybe year one, two, or three, doesn't, I can't tell you when that may be, but you would see rehabilitation of the asset somewhere in the range of 40,000 to 50,000 per unit. Now, would that be a change to the exterior historical facade of the building? Probably not. I don't know, even know whether it's a protected building right now, whether I could do that. But the building's a beautiful building, when you look at it from the outside. I personally wouldn't want to change it. So you would see improvements, you know, I could put a shine on the building, for sure, you know?
No, I'm not asking you to change it, I'm just saying, maintain it, as you say.
Yeah, you'd see everything from windows to roof to...
The integrity that it did have.
Yeah, you would see new retail space along the front, you would see, you know, improved common areas, basically, for the tenants, basically, so that they could sit, you know, so that they could, you know, congregate in other areas. Look, at the end of the day, our interests are aligned, because if I want to attract, basically, senior residents, I can't have, you know, senior residents stumbling by, you know, two 30-year-old, you know, alleged disabled people sat outside smoking cigarettes. It's not good for business. So, you know, I, it's, it's not how I want to operate my business. I can't operate like that if I want to achieve my goals. So it's, our interests are aligned.
Do you see the Housing Authority as a competitor? Because from what I understand, the city has been accused in the past, and to be honest, the city of Hagerstown and the Hagerstown Housing Authority are two separate entities. I think that a lot of people think that we're one and the same, but we are not. But it was put to the city that, well, if the city would just stop building senior housing, meaning the Hagerstown Housing Authority, then they wouldn't have to take in 70% disabled people. What, what would you have to say to that? You're saying, because I hear you saying it's more of a marketing thing, you have to be able to market the property to the population that you're trying to get.
You've got different forms of subsidy that's out there that comes down, basically, from the feds, okay? I don't know those projects that you talk about intimately well. Now, I don't know whether it was, was it, was it public housing, and then it was, it was transformed, basically, under a kind of a HOPE 6 grant, for instance? If, if that's the case, it's a different form of, it's a different form of subsidy. So the, the subsidy, I maintain the subsidy, basically, and I administer the subsidy, basically, at the project level, where the Housing Authority, they have a waitlist of people, and then they wait for those people to get individual vouchers, and then they take those vouchers, basically, all the way around, all around town. I don't know specifically, you know, about the other projects, so I can't really answer your question.
Yeah, the only HOPE 6, when you're saying HOPE 6, that's a project that is an overall as far as...
It's public housing that was torn down and rebuilt.
Yeah, because, yeah.
The one that Ms. Nye was referencing is, was the Hagerstown Housing Authority.
Right, Hagerstown, well, Hagerstown Housing Authority is also HOPE 6. I'm talking Walnut Towers, Potomac Towers, that were supposed to be senior complexes, and then, and I go round and round with Mr. Shankle, okay? But, and, you know, because he says to me, no, that's not how it was supposed to be, and then I said, you know, this was supposed to be senior, and why is it now that it's been open? Because that is the regulations. We have to do that. But now with the Brooks Building, the Brooks Building is senior. It is senior.
Yeah.
So, okay, so you know, and now, so if that's the case, then why did these other ones have to go away? But again, that's an old story, you know, but this is what we're faced with. But the improvements that you are saying is a lot more, and hopefully will remain. My only, I guess I draw back in the fact that you come here, and you come here, honestly, with a lot more of a positive than what we are facing, but hoping that you, as an investor, will do this and remain, because you've already purchased it, but not to come in and then to turn it around and say, you know what, I give up, and then we're right back to square one, and that's where Kristin, I think, is going to, you know, really, because the pilot program, let's face it, you know? Yeah, you can do it with us or without us, but you want to be a good neighbor, so...
Yeah.
And that's how I have to look at this.
I can extend the affordability for 20 years, no offense, without you, just like that.
Right, exactly, and I know that.
I don't want to, I don't want to say that, you know?
And that's why I want to put a positive.
I don't want to be that kind of, I don't want to be that guy.
Correct.
I want, look, my plan is to acquire and preserve.
Right.
That's my, that's my goal.
Do you ever build new projects?
I don't, sir, no, I don't. So, you know, maybe, you look, at the end of the day, basically, I am, I am now the, I don't, shouldn't say, maybe the guinea pig, basically, of the, the new world of the Hagerstown, you know, dealings, basically, with affordable, you know, developers, you know? Maybe, maybe we extend the pilot and you put some strings in there, and there's some, what we refer to as bad boy carve-outs, you know, and that's a, a list of demands, you know, and that's, you can drag my ass all the way from Memphis, just like that, and I'll be here, you know, I'll be here, you know, you know, I'll be here to answer your questions.
Well, I appreciate your, your honesty and your candor, your forthrightness, your, your explanations have, I think, been insightful and helpful. Mr. Metzner, did you want to say something?
I would just suggest, one, acknowledge that you've now had more meetings with this council from the future purchaser of the Alexander House than we have had from the Board of Directors of the Alexander House for the last 20 years, notwithstanding requests for those kinds of meetings. So, thank you, that's a very positive thing. Two, I would suggest that, that we have staff work with these folks to make this the best possibility for all of us. I understand you're looking for retail down there, there's, there's a lot of things we would like to see done. I also understand, listen, we, as much as we collectively would like to see market house housing in the Alexander House, until we come up with what we don't have right now, whether it be the Hamilton Hotel or the Alexander House, and that is adjacent parking next to high-rise apartments, you're never going to have market house housing. This isn't New York City. You're either going to have parking adjacent to the building, or you're not going to have what we need, either by way of market housing or hotel. I mean, it doesn't work. And the reality is that until the last number of years, maybe the last four to five years, we didn't sit in here and point out constantly how the Alexander House is one of the major problems of downtown Hagerstown, because it wasn't. It has been, and I accept your kind words, saying it was due to mismanagement, and I think those are very kind words, because I do believe there are very good people on this board, and I believe, based upon what I'm hearing from you and seeing, that there was some, some rather gross mismanagement that led to this. So I suggest that this isn't a fight that we should have, but this is a mutual agreement that we should have, and we should all be realistic in what our goals can be, and, and try to make the best out of this, and, and realize that it looks like this, hopefully, will not be Washington Gardens all over again. And of course, one way, one way staff can find out if they haven't done it already, the gentleman has 21 projects, all you got to do is go look at some of these projects and talk to the folks that, in the communities that he's in, and find out. I mean, that's, that's the best way in the world to, to find that out, and I'm sure he wouldn't be espousing his projects if it weren't, go look at them and see what I'm talking about. So I thank you for coming in and dealing with us.
I can provide you, I can provide you a list of projects. I can provide you a list, basically, of what those federal scores are for the physical condition. I can provide you references from district attorneys that I've worked with, council people that I've worked with, sellers.
And we all find out who we are, and we move along together to the betterment of both of us.
The, John and I had a conversation, and I'll quickly touch on this for you, because the, the dream of, of market rate housing there, let me throw around some... dream of a for, market rate housing there, let me throw around some numbers for you as a developer, so that you can kind of understand how difficult it would be to make that come to fruition, because it's, it's a basic numbers game, okay? And what restricts it getting off the ground, unlike if it was Washington DC or Baltimore or, or New York City, for instance, is the overall rent, basically, that can be charged, basically, for, for the actual unit. So, the units are about 450 square feet. To make them desirable, basically, just like the project down the way here that John tore me through above the Thai restaurant, which was done fabulously well, I took pictures on my phone when John tore, I thought, it was a great, it was great. You'll lease those, you'll lease those things like that, okay? Expensive to do, though, based on the numbers that John provided to me. So, let's say you go from 96 units, and you make the units twice the size, and you've got 50 units, market rate. What can you charge those 50 units for, okay? Let's say you can charge them at $600 a unit for a 800-square-foot, one-bedroom, okay? So you've got 50 units, basically, at $600, that's 30 grand a month, times, you know, times 12, that's $360,000. It cost you, I think it cost 70 grand a unit, did it, John, basically, to do these for?
Approximately, that was interior.
So, let's say you get some economies of scale, okay? Let's say you get economies of scale at 50 grand a unit, okay? And that's, you know, times 50, and that's $2.5 million. Can you even service the debt with $360,000 of income? Let's say you've got another, let's say, half of its profit, let's say, you know, you make, let's say you clear $200,000 in, you know, pure profit. Can you service $2.5, $3 million of debt, basically, with that project?
And maintain the building.
And maintain the building, and create a return, basically, for a developer that's going to take on a project like that. So, that's, that's the challenge that you face there with that particular project. And I, I don't want to burst your bubble, because, you know, I see, I see where you would like to go with it, and, you know, do I blame you for going that way? And do I blame you for that deconcentration? No, I don't. I would say exactly the same thing if I was sat in your chair. It's just the rent that can be charged. Now, if you were $1,000 rents, then you'd have more income, you know, the hard-cost construction would be the same, the building would generate more money, then it would be, therefore, it would be more attractive, basically, for a developer, basically, to make...
How profitable is all the technology on the roof?
The prop, the building, it carries the building. The TV station and the cell phone antennas, they, they carry the building. Without the building, without those, you would see, you would see real issues, basically, at that building. The building loses money now. It loses money because they've, they've never, they've never refinanced the high interest rate, basically, on the debt. So they, they carry, they carry an 8.5% interest rate.
Wow.
I can lock debt at 3.5%, you know, and save 100 grand a year. So it's just, you have a well-intentioned board, I truly mean that, I've met with them, you know, a few different times, they're just not developers, and they just, they just miss, they just miss it, they really do, and I don't think they intend to do that, you know, and I, I think, and that's my piece on the board, I truly, I truly back that statement, so...
Mr. Metzner. Thank you for being here. Did you actually leave the beach to come here?
Well, I left, I didn't leave early. If I could tell you where I was, no, I didn't, so I was, my wife made me turn my cellphone off, because I'm always working, and...
Good for her.
So, yeah, I was like, can I use Skype? And she's like, 15 minutes a day, and so, but...
But let me just, let me just ask you a couple of questions, if I could. Will the seniors in this building, have you consummated a sale?
Not yet.
Okay, which you anticipate doing it. Will the seniors in this building have to be Section 8 people?
They are. All 100, all 95 units are.
Okay.
But not all, but not all seniors that are Section 8 are what we are seeing. I mean, if you go down to the Brooks Building, there are those that, and it depends on the amount of money, and, you know, there are seniors that need this, they do need it, okay? Our community, they need it, and that's why you've got the waiting list of people. And you're not seeing just the ones that are, you're seeing seniors that are waiting, a lot.
Let me just, you make a very, very good point. Do you know that in that building, the city supplies electricity to people who can't even pay their electric bills?
Yes, sir.
That's a problem for us. We have to done these people for, for money to pay their electric bills. I think that's, that's, that's not very, that's not very good for the city of Hagerstown. We do need, we do need some spending in downtown Hagerstown if we're ever going to revive it. I assume that your intention is to keep all the commercial stuff there that you can, or get new commercial stuff there, if you can. Is that...
You only have, well, do you have the, when I say vacant, the gentleman that owns the jewelry store?
Correct.
He actually still has a lease.
Yes.
He pays, he pays income.
Well, yeah.
Every single month.
Yeah.
And I've not yet spoken to him, but I believe it's just for kind of advertising and marketing, because he's still got his name on, on the sign, and he's just moved out to a, a much nicer location that's probably got parking, and, you know, is a little bit more convenient for his, you know, for his customer base. So, you know, can you...
But when I'm talking commercial, I'm talking all the stuff that's not housing there. It would really be nice if you could make a commitment to us, as you go through with this, that you won't have a bail bonds, tattoo joints, or hookah bars there. Quite frankly, we have enough of them in downtown Hagerstown, and we need to get rid of them.
I'll give, I'll give you an example, okay? So, I bought an apartment complex two weeks ago that I worked on for a year, it was 306 units in Los Angeles. In the middle of the, it occupied an entire city block. In the, on one corner, basically, of the, the apartment complex was a liquor store. I was like, this is the most asinine thing I've ever heard in my life, you know? The police, the chief, the chief of police over there is thinking, a liquor store, basically, in the middle of a housing complex? That's like, it's probably his worst nightmare. And so, I canceled that lease immediately, and I made the gentleman leave. And I basically converted that building, basically, and I donated it, basically, to the Housing Authority, along with $100,000. There's this, I operate my apartment complex with a, with a tough-love approach, okay? I wouldn't let my children stay up, basically, till 11 o'clock at night, I'm just not going to do it. Am I going to let my tenants stay up at 11 o'clock at night and do whatever they want to do? No, I'm not, because I'm the landlord of the building, and I have to protect my tenants. Would I have moved a, put a tattoo pile there, I wouldn't have accepted that lease, because it sends the wrong message, and it's not good for business, and it's not, I don't think it's the right decision. I, when I saw that immediately, I thought it was just a mistake, it was just them clutching, basically, for income. And you know what they make on it, on the lease? $400 a month. I don't need $400 a month. If I would have turned around and I'd have canceled that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have done it.
Have you talked to the people, TV station?
I have not, because they...
Are you aware that they have sought other locations in this community for, for their TV station, that they have attempted to move out of downtown Hagerstown?
They have, but they've made capital investments, basically, to the space, basically, to the $2.5 million, and then they've re-upped their lease.
And upgrading everything.
And then they've re-upped their lease as well.
Well, they were pretty close to closing the deal, I think, with some other people. Maybe that's why they got, they got stopped.
Just out of curiosity, in preparation for this meeting, I wanted to know what kind of calls for service are occurring at the Alexander House in the last three years, so 2011, 2012, and this year to date. There have been 15 fire calls, 303 EMS calls, 34 fire marshal inspections, and four fire marshal permits. And on the police side, there have been a total of 255 calls for service. So when we talk about an impact, you know, that's sort of what we look at in terms of the community resources being sent there on a, on a pretty routine basis. So, I just wanted to put that out there, as this is part of what we're looking at. Every time a fire, a fire engine is parked out in front, it blocks, you know, there's, there's all kinds of residual effects of that as too, and that's obviously one of our concerns. Obviously, if there's a fire, we want the fire department to be there, if there's a crime going on, we want the police to be there.
I could clearly demonstrate to you, basically, across multiple properties, my ability, basically, to handle that, okay? I have also pulled those police call logs, okay? So, I sent out an email today, basically, on a property that I bought eight months, seven months ago, 278 units, basically, in Cleveland, Ohio, seniors, 80% disabled, 20% elderly, murders in the, two murders in the building of seniors. This place was bad, really, really bad. So, I came in extremely heavy-handed, basically, I employed round-the-clock security, I control all access, basically, to the building, and then, basically, three hours a night, I employ off-duty cops, basically, on secondary, to sweep the building. So, I met with all the stakeholders, basically, of the, of the area, including HUD and council people, and so on and so forth. I said, I will reduce crime, no doubt about it, I know exactly what to do, I had a 15-step plan, okay? Because tenant safety is my number-one priority, okay? And I sent out an email, basically, that we've been preparing on, you know, which was the next six months of call logs, okay? And it demonstrated that in that last, that six months, from the, the month I got everything in place, okay, I reduced crime, basically, or, I shouldn't say crime, I reduced the call logs by 38%. I will send John a copy of that email, demonstrating, basically, those statistics.
I think that's important for everybody to hear.
Extremely, extremely important, so...
Sure, Mr. Metzner.
You know what, I think there's really a good case to be made for that building and other similar buildings, causing the situation where we, we don't have certain retail establishments in downtown that we should have.
Yeah.
I mean, we desperately need a drugstore in downtown. When you talk to these seniors, regardless whether it's the Housing Authority, Potomac Towers, or down at the Alexander House, they desperately need a drugstore. We can't get a drugstore in downtown, for whatever reason. They desperately need someplace to buy food, they desperately need a large food store. But because of the lack of income, they can't attract...
We had a center located a drugstore around Washington.
They can't attract it. But, so, I mean, that's, that's the sort of thing that, you know, that really bothers us, I think. Let me just say, finally, that that building has had, has been a great historical building for this community. When I was younger, I remember they had the nicest restaurant in that community of any place downtown. In 1948, a guy by the name of Jerry Ford was elected to the United States Congress, and he was told, you definitely don't arrive in Washington DC at night because of the crime problems down there. This was '48. And he told me this himself, because in a different life I got to, in a different life I got to go to the White House occasionally. And so, he and his wife Betty stayed at the Hotel Alexander, so they could, at night, so they could arrive in, in Washington DC the, the next day, so they didn't have to worry about the crime at night in Washington DC, which probably was a crime every other night or something. But anyway, a lot of people in this community, a lot of the older people in this community have a lot of, of, I guess, respect and sympathy for that building, and they really don't like what's happened to it. So, if you're going to be the owner, any way you can work with us and improve it. And the building is virtually the same building, I think all they ever did was change the windows, they put some ugly windows in there, and there's not too much you have to do besides, you said polish it up, which is a good idea.
I can definitely see that you, the board is very split, you know, that's clearly obvious, isn't it? So, you know, and, you know, you know, maybe you have requirements, maybe there's strings that come, basically, with the renewal of the pilot, you know, maybe there are, you know, clauses, there are goals, or what achieve, you know, things that I have to, basically, achieve, you know? If there, if there are issues, basically, you know, you know, you call me and I have to, and I will come, you know, and I will answer, you know, I will answer those issues. Again, I want to be a good neighbor, you know, I want the building to work for you, you know, I, I don't want it to be an eyesore, I don't want you, it's just not, it's not what I want. But also, at the same time, I know that I have a conflicting, a conflicting goal, you know, from, you know, 50%, you know, 40% of the board here, so...
Well, I think the next best step would be to continue to work with staff, as Mr. Metzner alluded to. I would love to be in on that conversation as a follow-up to the conversation today, to further discuss the issue, and I definitely think that we want to be partners to, to make the best outcome for the people of Hagerstown. So, I think that that's the direction we'll go in, and we'll, we'll bring something back to the council that hopefully will meet everybody's satisfaction.
Can I just say this, Kristin, and then you can finish? I think what you've put forward is very good, and I hate to see, I don't want you to feel that we've attacked, okay? Personally, I didn't attack, I really commend myself for that.
Is this a first?
This is a first, this is a first, this is a first, okay? This is a first, what can I say?
This is positive penny.
But this is positive penny, because at the end of the session, we won't be. Anyway, what, what you have to realize from us, and those that were born and raised here, okay, is what we have seen and what was here is no longer. When the, the housing projects were put in place, we had grocery stores, we had drugstores. There's no way that I know that you can commit to that. They pulled out here for whatever reason. It would be nice to be able to get something back, but on your watch, possibly not, but that's not saying that it can't happen. I think with what you have to offer is very good. I think that if we get something that is in place, regardless if you do flip it, that whoever may come in as the next owner, I'm only praying to God that we can continue with what you started, okay? That's my only fear. I just want you to be able to go through with the project and hold on to it. I know what investors do, they move on, but hopefully, this may be a community that you may want to see, gee, you know what, it is a good community. And where do you have your place in Baltimore? Where is the place that you bought, purchased?
It's called the Marlborough, it's an old historic hotel.
Where is it located at in Baltimore?
It's in Bolton North, basically, near the art school.
Okay.
It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful building.
That's all, but thank you very much.
This would be one of the smaller buildings that you own, or projects that you own, correct?
The average project size is 125 units to about 140 units. That's, that's, that's the sweet spot, so...
I disagree that this board's split, I think there's a good chance we can reach a consensus. I hear everybody's trying to figure out a way what to do, and I think if, in an agreement, we, we need some reassurances, I don't think that's unreasonable for us to proceed, and that's, you shouldn't perceive, perceive that as being against you, I think we're trying to, we're expressing our concerns to you, and, but not attacking you.
I weren't expecting to come here today, and then the mayor signs the resolution, and then I was out the door, you know, I, I didn't think it was going to be that easy, based on my conversations with John. Trust me, he set my expectations very well, you know, he gave me the background. And it sounds, I have some proving to do, you know, I...
Yeah, I think what you've heard here is being jaded from past experience.
Yes, and I have to prove it to you that I am, I am not, I am not the owner of Washington Gardens, I'm not...
And I don't think I went along with that one, did I?
And we appreciate that, thank you.
I said no to that one, boy, was my good on that one, dill.
Mr. Alshar, I know you wanted to say something.
Just to the point that, again, I think we need to look at this agreement, and what capability that exists currently with this body, with this agreement, before we go consenting to signing it off to something else entirely. I don't think that it is as much an experience of being jaded at every turn, as much as it is an experience that largely, our experience with this type of housing demographic in our city has, has proven to be, to the detriment of our ability to succeed. And I think that we need to ask ourselves, while somebody's sitting here telling us, you know, this can't return to the market, and can't be done under marketable conditions in, in any reasonable fashion, while I appreciate that comment, I think we need to talk to the stakeholders in our downtown, the business community in our downtown, you know, the folks that have homes, you know, in and around our downtown, I think... I think that we need to have an understanding, you know, of those folks before we go signing over, you know, because this agreement's real clear, the granting withholding of consent to assign shall be absolutely within the discretion of the city. Uh, I think we need to have a clear understanding of that, on what those parameters are, if you're going to consider it. I doubt you get me at the end of the day, regardless, uh, because, because I don't, you know, have great experience with it, but, but, uh, I think that we need to hear from folks...
But still, at the end of the day, you still are the owner. You will be the owner. You still will be able to do what, and with, with us saying yes to the pilot or otherwise, you still will have it.
Unfortunately, it's not the way that I want it to work out.
No, but, but still, I mean, this, you know, that's, that's Kristen, but it'll, it'll, it'll work.
Look, at the end of the day, you have other developers here in town, okay? As a voice of reason, that are probably built over multifamily apartments. I would encourage you, basically, you know, offline, so, basically, to maybe speak to them, just, you know, to, to, to just pose, basically, that scenario of, could ninety-five units, basically, ever be market-rate housing, you know, and, and could, is that project viable?
You gotta ask them what their numbers were, but, you know, they might say, "Oh, yeah, but without a, a financial pro forma that shows it working..."
Well, this has been a very worthwhile conversation, and I...
If you work that out, I'll sell you the building back.
We'll, we'll continue the conversation, uh, in a different setting, but we'll continue the conversation. I'll, I'll have John work with you, and we'll coordinate a meeting to follow up. And, uh, but I do wanna try to stick to our agenda as much as possible for time reasons. But I really do appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll be going...
That was Karen's boo-boo.
To, uh, item six on the agenda is, I'm sorry, item five, the reunion and remembrance. Hagerstown honors her Civil War veterans.
Tell your little girl, Steve, that Karen said, "Let them go first."
But I hope the developer remembers that when we look for a sponsorship.
That's right.
I'm bribing her...
And Karen will be doing some fundraising for the Maryland Theater, so that we can come up with that money.
I'm bribing her with a trip to Sweet Frog.
Not me, his dog.
I know.
I'll take this one.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we're here, um, for informational purposes. A few years back, we came to you on some events that we were doing for the one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Civil War, and coming up this Saturday is one of those events, and that is at Rose Hill Cemetery, at the Washington Ca, Confederate Cemetery, at eleven a.m. We're pleased to, um, announce, um, that Lieutenant Governor Anthony Brown is our keynote speaker for this event, that our Master of Ceremonies is Kelly Wright, and, uh, that we also have, uh, the Maryland Department of Veterans Affairs Secretary Edward Chow, Jr., attending this event. And we have a lot of people involved. Um, we have four key components, which I will have Stephen Bachmiller, uh, speak on in a second. Um, and then also, we're going to have a commemorative program, and I do wanna thank the Harmon Kenworthy and Minnick Funeral Home for underwriting that program for us. Um, and with that, I wanna hand it over to Stephen Bachmiller, even though we, uh, our office in Community Affairs just helped with specifics. This was, um, Steve's, um, I would say, brainchild. He, uh, really went about, uh, doing this event, and, uh, and I think he did it very well. We have four key components. We wanna thank Rose Hill, and, Rose Hill Cemetery and their Board of Directors for helping us with this. And I think it's really a unique event, and I hope that everyone can come out and be part of this, because, um, this is, this is our history.
Uh, the event, uh, the way it's structured is a little on the complex side. Uh, there's four total, um, elements to it at two locations within the cemetery. Uh, the first area, the event will begin down at, uh, the Washington Confederate Cemetery, at the Speaker's Stand there. And two elements will happen there. One will be a, um, a rededication of the Washington Confederate Cemetery, and then also, within a few feet of that cemetery, is the burial site of Jacob Wheaton, for whom we all know Jacob Wheaton Park being named. We've found out in the last couple of years that Jacob Wheaton was a bit, uh, more, um, important of a historic figure than we knew before, in that it appears that he was likely the first African-American in Maryland, in Maryland to vote after the Civil War. Um, hi, his gravestone, um, was starting to show significant signs of decay, so last year, uh, we did a little fundraiser to raise some funds to have his grave marker renovated and a new foundation placed under it, so it's, uh, upright. So we'll be unveiling that and, uh, rededicating the cemetery at the first stop. Then there'll be a procession through the cemetery to, uh, the center of Rose Hill Cemetery, where there's an existing memorial to the Reno Post of the Grand Army of the Republic. The Grand Army of the Republic is a veterans' organization similar to the American Legion or the VFW for Union Civil War veterans. There were two posts here in Hagerstown. Reno Post was the primary post, and, uh, their memorial was built in nineteen twenty-three. We're gonna be rededicating that. And then immediately adjacent to that, we'll be unveiling a new memorial to the second, uh, post that was here in Hagerstown, which was known as Lion Post Number Thirty-One, which was established in eighteen eighty-three and lasted until about nineteen fifteen. And this was a post made up of veterans of the United States Color Troops, uh, regiments, uh, that were started to, uh, be recruited by the federal government in nineteen, in eighteen sixty-three. Um, so, of course, you know, during the nineteenth century, many things were segregated, and the Grand Army of the Republic was kind of a mixed bag. Some of it was, some of it wasn't, and this area it was. So we had two posts, one for, uh, white veterans and one for the black veterans, and the one for the black veterans is kind of, kind of fallen off the radar historically over the years, so we're kind of, uh, correcting that and drawing attention to it by the dedication of this memorial. Uh, it was, all the, the fundraising was done, uh, through donations. Uh, the building materials were contributed at cost by the Steffi Finley Company, uh, and, uh, the city, uh, through our Department of, uh, Engineering and Parks, donated the labor, and our mason, Scott Smoot, did a phenomenal job, as he always does, uh, on the memorial. He also did the brickwork on the, uh, Margaret Greenawalt Park, uh, last year, um, so you have an idea of the quality of his work. The event, uh, begins at ten forty-five with a pre-event concert. The Roarsville Community, uh, Roarsville Carnet Band of Washington County is going to be the, uh, the music, as well as the choir from Ebenezer AME Church. And there's also gonna be, uh, educational components to the program as well, and, uh, historical interpreters of very, various grave sites of, of significant Hagerstonians, also some exhibits in a tent, a tent exhibit inside the main gate. Um, to taking advantage of, uh, the publicity we have here through, uh, the television medium, we're just letting the public know that gates will open at ten a.m. The parking will be at Bester Elementary School, and also at the, uh, parking lot behind Memorial Park across the street from, um, from Bester. And, uh, uh, it'll be pedestrian access to the cemetery for that, uh, for that period, and it'll be through the main gate. Um, staff will enter through the side gate, um, and, uh, parking passes are being provided to, uh, appropriate staff, including the mayor and council, uh, and you'll also be provided maps on the designated area within the cemetery to park.
And there will also be handicapped accessible parking within the cemetery?
Yes, um, if, for folks who need handicapped accessible parking, they'll come to the, uh, side gate that's along South Potomac Street, and if they have, uh, handicap needs, they'll be allowed through, and then drop their folks off, and then go to a designated area within the cemetery.
Can we bring chairs?
Absolutely, but we are also, uh, there's gonna be, uh, two-hundred seats set up for the general public.
Okay. So I have to get there at what time? 'Cause I'll have to walk from Potomac End.
For, for this, for this...
I'm not, look, I'm not staff. I'm walking. I'll park on Potomac, and I'm coming in that side gate, okay?
Gate opens at ten.
I, right.
Yes.
And they'll be standing probably line-line, hopefully, knee-deep. I just wanna be able to have a seat.
And I understand there's gonna be a shuttle or something, or, for people who need transported from a lot over to the cemetery, is that right?
At this point, no, we figure we handle that, uh, with allowing handicap parking within the cemetery.
Yeah.
Um, the, the two parking areas at, uh, Bester and at Memorial Park actually are quite close to the main gate. Uh, it's less than a five-minute walk.
There will be a small, uh, temporary street closure from eleven to eleven forty-five, because it is so close to the, um, event site where we're, um, unveiling, um, that it's just temporary. It's, it will happen during that time, and we'll be corresponding with the police on that.
Yeah, the first of those two locations is located right up against South Potomac Street, so rather the conflict with traffic and all...
And just speak to, a minute to the advisory committee that helped you in this process, please.
Yes, uh, when we proposed this three-event program, um, to, uh, your predecessor, uh, board, uh, or, uh, mayor and council, uh, we were given the go-ahead with this, uh, and we were, uh, told to make sure we are sensitive to all, uh, histories and heritage, and, in order to accommodate and accomplish that, we compiled a advisory committee of three persons from the community, one of which is a descendant of Union veteran, one is a descendant of Confederate veteran, and one is representing the African-American community. And we have involved, uh, that, uh, the members of that committee with, with the planning of the event, and they're all very happy with the way it's turning out, so...
And I, I would like to thank both the mayor and, um, delegate Donahue for helping us, uh, to secure the keynote speaker for the event as well.
Well, I'm gonna thank you guys for putting this all together. I mean, this is, uh, you know, we had the groundbreaking a few months ago, and, uh, it'll be great to see the final product, so... Mr. Alshar, did you have a question or something? Mr. Munson?
It would be, I'd be remiss if I didn't make this point. Lieutenant Governor's going to be the speaker, and John Donahue worked very hard to get the Lieutenant Governor here.
Yes, he did.
Uh, so, I just wanna say appreciation to John.
Absolutely.
I'd like to thank you, because, you know, our heritage, all of this combined, is where we have lost it in Hagerstown, you know? And, not that I'm putting the stadium down here, but what we have and what we can capture is not being captured. And Steve, without you bringing it forward, I mean, this is where now, if honestly enough gets off of their duffs and do something, this town is historic, you know? The Washington County is, but so is this town. And that's what people need to realize. But I do thank you. I really do. And I haven't gotten your book yet, but I'll get down there to get it, and you can sign it.
You wanna tell us about your book, Steve?
Well, that was part of our one-hundred-and-fiftieth, uh, commemoration as well. That was put together, uh, and published in two thousand and eleven. It's called Hagerstown and the Civil War. It's a photo history of the city, uh, as, and its role within the Civil War. It's published by Arcadia Publishing.
And people can get copies at the visitors'.
Yes, they can get copies at the Visitor Center. Um, there are small royalties involved, and they are the property of the city, so bet every six months, we get a small check from the publisher, goes in the city coffers for the, for the work.
And we forgot one item, and that's the prelude event on Friday night.
Yes, thank you. Uh, on Friday evening at seven o'clock here in this room, uh, we're having a noted, uh, Maryland Civil War historian. His name is Dan Toomey. Uh, Dan is the, uh, guest curator at the Vienna Railroad Museum down in Baltimore. He is an expert on Maryland's Civil War veterans, north and south, and he's gonna be giving a slide, uh, program, uh, that evening as a prelude to the event on Saturday here in this room. It's, uh, free and open to the public. And also, uh, to build also on what Karen said about the event program, everyone who comes to the event, as, while supplies last, as they say on the commercials, uh, will receive a, uh, event program, which is actually more like a magazine. It's twenty-eight pages, and it's chock-full of historic photographs, some of which haven't been, uh, seen widely, uh, yet, uh, that are all related to Hagerstown Civil War veterans. And it'll be kind of a, um, an educational piece that people will be able to take away, take home with them, and...
And Steve did a great job on the program as well. It's very interesting. And again, we wanna thank the Harmon Kenworthy and Minnick Funeral Home for underwriting that for us.
Let me just say this, um, when, oh, God, back twenty, twenty-some years ago, I guess it was, there was two soldiers, that they brought the remains in, I think it was two. I'm not sure, but we have it on video, but don't ask me where it's at, in my house. But we sat there, okay, my husband and I, and two of the children that I watched, and saw that come in, and it was just so overwhelming. And there was people that were there, but not what there should've been. And that's what I'm saying about this heritage that we have.
Karen just, uh, also reminded me that, uh, part of the program will also involve a number of living history, uh, volunteers, uh, that'll be based at various grave sites, as well as, uh, honor guard. Uh, we've contacted the local suns, uh, organizations from northern and southern organizations, and they're gonna form a joint color guard to emphasize the reunion element, uh, that we have to the program. So there'll be a joint color guard, uh, involved as well.
That's great.
Thank you so much. We look forward to it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Well, later on in the afternoon, so...
I'm sorry, I don't carry an umbrella.
It is eleven in the morning, so it...
Possible chance of a thunderstorm is a story we've heard.
Okay.
Yeah.
At twelve-thirty...
I know you guys are in Good with Lou Scali, right? And you're gonna plan good weather.
We are. We're planning good weather.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the twenty-thirteen Citizen Recognition Boards and Commissions Luncheon.
Um, we do this annually to thank our, um, volunteers and our various city committees. Um, in the past, we've done a luncheon. Um, we'd like to do it again in City Center if we can, and Academy Theater, if it's possible, uh, November twenty-second at noon. That's the Friday before Thanksgiving. That has been a tradition, um, if we wanna continue that tradition. Um, and, uh, City Clerk Donna Speckler helped me last year, that, uh, we, we did longevity awards as well.
Sounds good. I think it's a great idea. All right. The next item on the agenda, number seven, is the street closure request for December twenty-first, twenty thirteen, the Police Athletic League Reindeer Run.
Um, the Police Athletic League and, uh, Nick, he's with me today. Um, they came to us talking about a five-k, and they wanted to do it around Christmas time, um, around the holiday time. And, um, so we encouraged them to do it in downtown. Um, and they were, uh, very gracious to work with us, and we're gonna work together to make this, uh, a great event. They've decided on December twenty-first. The route is listed. Um, they'd actually start on South Potomac End at the Elizabeth Hager Center lot, which would, uh, encompass a lot of the downtown. They'd run to their Athletic League building and around. Um, and they selected downtown because they want to build this into something. The first year, they wanna start simple and...
That's correct.
With the run, and then build it into a holiday festival in the area. Um, the Police Athletic League is a great cause. Um, police are working with the Police Athletic League for street closure. The other city services, um, we would, um, absorb through the public functions budget. Um, with that, Nick, do you wanna say a couple words?
Uh, that, she's pretty much covered it. I mean, our goal is to make this into a holiday fest, um, and, and it's gonna be our big fundraiser moving forward. We'd like to do it annually. Um, since it's our first time, we're really focusing on establishing the run and using that as the basis for the fest. Um, we talked about possibly bringing in ice sculptures and, and all of that. I mean, that's, that's the goal. Uh, how much we get to this year will be based on our budget, um, and, and what we can, you know, fiscally responsibly do, uh, for the first year. Uh, but yeah, doing it downtown is, is definitely what we wanna do with it. Initially, we had talked about just trying to have it out at the fairground, uh, but, uh, involving the downtown and, and bringing that down here is, is exactly what we wanna do, so... Uh, and, and once again, before anything else, I just wanna thank the mayor and council for supporting the Police Athletic League. Uh, you guys have already done it in, in numerous ways, so I wanted to get that out there.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I think you guys do very important work, and I can't see why we would deny your request, so...
Okay.
We look forward to it.
Thank you. Just remember, he's one of the ones that's on the street now for how many hours? We're doing twelve hours a day? Are you, are you twelve hours a day, Nick?
I'm not.
He's not. He's the detective then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our final item on the agenda is an update on the residential component of Invest Hagerstown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
We're back again. We initially discussed the Invest Hagerstown Residential Program in early May, and then again at the June 4 work session. And just to refresh everyone's memory, we, we were discussing this coupled with the first, third commercial portion of the Invest Hagerstown Initiative. And the mayor and council at the time heard what we had initially proposed for the residential program. We had talked about owner-occupied grants for existing owner-occupied structures throughout the city, and that they would be grants for select home repairs, and there would be no income restrictions. And at the time, the mayor and council provided some initial feedback, and we took that into account, and we actually went back and reviewed the mayor and council's comments on video. And we put together a new program concept based on that feedback from the work session during the June 4 work session. And we looked at neighborhood problems with vacant properties and stabilizing neighborhoods by taking properties and making them owner-occupied, taking these longstanding vacant properties and getting them in the hands of homeowners. So, those were the, the goals of the updated program concept. You know, once again, going back to what the mayor and council had given us feedback for, for the initial program concept. And what we are looking at with the current updated concept would be a down payment assistance and rehabilitation program, which would be a loan to grant that would seek to target these longstanding vacant properties in residential neighborhoods. And the, the program details would be providing someone who's seeking to buy a vacant home anywhere in the city, up to $7,500 of down payment assistance, or a combination of down payment assistance and rehabilitation assistance that could be used either or. And the program requirements would, would require the property to be vacant for at least 12 months, and the person buying the property would have to agree to be an owner-occupant or make that property their principal residence for at least five years. And upon making that five-year commitment, the loan would turn into a grant and be forgiven. The other concept that we looked at was strengthening the existing down payment assistance program through the City Center Residency Initiative. It would be more of the same of what we just described. And the current program offers a $2,500 or $5,000 down payment loan to grant payment for homeowners. And what we were looking to do is to beef that up and actually increase that to a $10,000 down payment loan to grant, which could also be used for a combination of down payment and/or rehabilitation assistance. The, the first two concepts would use 150,000 for the citywide down payment rehabilitation assistance program, and the City Center Residency Initiative enhancement would take 100,000. So, that would leave us with 50,000 for what we are looking at as a potential edits to the rental subsidy side of the City Center Residency Initiative. And the rental subsidy side is something that we're currently reviewing, and we actually, we have a housing work group that's going to be assisting staff as part of our citizen engagement efforts. We're trying to get real estate professionals and other folks in the area in the profession of housing to assist staff in our review of the City Center Rental Subsidy Initiative Program, and then also our other existing programs for housing. And John, if you want to touch on that a little bit?
Well, a couple quick things. The, we would envision both the citywide program and the citycenter one being able to be combined. So, if someone qualifies for the citycenter requirements, they would be able to get the $10,000 and the 7,500 if they're happening to buy a vacant property that meets those requirements. And the council has discussed the rental subsidy side of things. I believe Councilmember Metzner had made some comments at the last time we were here. So, we want to look at that, and we are looking at all of our programs. So, we have put together a housing work group, the same as we've put together licensing work groups of electricians and plumbers to get their input. So, we have two realtors, we have developers, we have landlords, we have investors, as well as the Housing Authority and Habitat onboard to sit down and chat with us. And we're still in discussions with a homeowner and a tenant. So, we have a well-rounded group to advise us on our housing programs. And when it comes to that program and some of the particulars of these other programs, we wanted to get a broader base opinion to be able to come back with some fine details. But tonight, we wanted to see if we're going in the direction that the mayor and council would like us to go in, and achieving those goals.
Don?
I like what you're proposing, but let's don't forget that housing's best when you can walk to work, along with economic development.
Absolutely, sir.
Any other questions or comments for staff? I agree, I think you're going in the right direction.
Yeah, I see these as, let's see if it works, you know, if it's enough subsidy and so forth, so let's give it a shot here. See where it goes, and you revised it based on our comments, I can see.
Yes, and we currently administer another down payment assistance program. That one is for low to mod income. It's a state program, but we administer state funds. And we've been pushing that program pretty hard just in the last few months, and we have, I think, six homes being sold where we're providing that assistance. And we have two or three that have...
Two have already went to settlement, and we have about five or six more in the pipeline.
And so, so we are pushing that program, and we've ramped up our marketing on our other programs. We're starting to get some much better interest, and I think a lot has to do with the marketing and the leveraging of programs.
In all these cases, we're requiring them to be homeowners, and are we going to have a length of term involved? I might have missed that, but...
Yes, for the citywide and actually the City Center Residency, we're both looking at five years.
Five years?
Yes.
For both?
In the state program, we're not able to do that.
So, is it five years for the other one, too?
Yes, sir. And if we missed that in the memo...
Well, I just want to be sure, because if people look back, but the council approved.
Yes, sir.
And I think we approved. Five year, you know, so it needs to be clear that it was meant for both.
Yes, sir.
Because I don't see that in the second one, okay.
Yeah, I think that what you gain by providing focus to the vacant homes within our, what I like to term the traditionally stable owner-occupied neighborhoods, is a two-for-one. In other words, you get a benefit by a program that reoccupies what a lot of citizens in the city deem as good, you know, solid homes that, you know, through the economic downturn are, for a myriad of reasons, sitting vacant. And sitting vacant for an extended period of time has tended to see or witness the real estate entities forgetting about them, the banks forgetting about them. And so, I think that that's the one positive. The obvious second positive is a lot of those same citizens like myself appreciate when our neighborhood is full of homes that people are occupying and not one out of every 10 or so homes sitting vacant, and you know that's the vacant home, and it detracts from the stability in your neighborhood. So, I think, I think you get a two-for-one when you, when you focus efforts in that direction. Just a second.
Five years seems to me to be a little short. Why did you select five? I mean, why didn't you select, say, seven?
The existing City Center Residency Initiative, we were trying to keep the programs consistent. That required, that has required five.
Okay.
That's something we could always revisit.
Okay.
Do we know from history whether or not most people stay well beyond that? The average is six and a half years, right?
Probably about that. And, and we have some homes that the city, in our single-family home ownership program, that when five years was up, they, they would leave. And we have others where, where they've been there for 15 years plus.
And again, and again, it depends on how well the city is doing, how the neighborhoods are doing, and it's whether or not they want to live here with their children. I mean, this is where the whole downturn is that we're facing, you know? They, they want to be able to invest, and as you heard at the last regular council meeting, it's a matter of if we don't get it, that it's cleaned up, we're out of here. So, we really have got to have something that's going to get hit really hard in order to be able to have what we need in this city to make it go.
But one of the best things you can have going for a neighborhood is stability. And if it's...
Home ownership is a good step towards that.
Sure is, sure is.
That's it, because that's...
And I don't think that we are going to achieve those goals of stability broadly in these neighborhoods simply through money. I think that we have to have some serious discussions on legislative initiatives, one of which we have opposed in the past that has not met with great fanfare, which is the Uniform Rental Lease Legislation, and a number of other initiatives that I think would serve to, to, you know, show the community that we're serious about stability within our neighborhoods and accountability within our neighborhoods. I think the second thing is, is, you know, working with these neighborhoods on, on the neighborhood-level infrastructure needs assessment approach. I think that those, you know, are both things that I think would benefit and give folks that live within those neighborhoods and have bought into those neighborhoods a sense of buy-in to the programs. It sounds like there's a pretty clear consensus that we want to move forward with this, so. Thank you for all your work on this.
Yeah, you just got a little bit more added into that.
Appreciate it. You're, you're working on that.
We'll be back at a later time, likely in October for official approval.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks. At this time, and we're practically on time, we'll have the city administrators' comments.
Not for me this evening.
All right, council comments? Mr. Brubaker?
Thank John Wesley United Methodist Church for investing in, in the city center and in our community through their revitalized stained glass windows, installed from the '30s through the '50s, and recently all restored, and helping make that structure more beautiful in addition to our downtown. And I want to say we had other than, we had eight agenda items that were all positive tonight, and all helping move the city forward, and that's very encouraging.
Mr. Metzner?
All right, I don't want beat up, okay? But I have to prove a point here. First off, the porch fest down on South Prospect.
Right, very good, thank you, Penny.
It was, it was honestly, just to look at the homes and to look at the streets, you really would not think that they do have some problems there. And they do. But it, it absolutely was beautiful, and it was a beautiful day. And they're going to be doing it next year again.
Why would we beat you up on that?
Oh, no, I'm not finished. This is the positive. Don't go there, okay? And I'm wound. But it was, it was very nice. Neighborhoods first, they really did. They did an excellent, excellent job. And the music at all of the different venues, I mean, how well was that done, you know? And as much as I have problems walking, I walked it. And next time, I'll be with a walker. Okay.
Before you go on, Penny, I just want to second your comments.
Okay, all right. I told Kristin about it, I had him on the phone. I just, I have to just prove a point here, and it comes to this whole broken window theory. And this is basically in my neck of the woods, all right? And this is what took place, that I know of, in the last three weeks. And of course, this is not my neck of the woods, but it is because we're in City Hall. And Kristin can attest to this, because in leaving council the one evening, we... Oh, you can? In leaving council the one evening, and I'm going down the street, and, you know, gutsy me, it's no big thing to me, and I'm seeing all of this on this side of the street, this in the middle of the street, this on this side of the street, and I'm thinking, hmm, where's my phone, where's my phone? Because I knew there was going to be a problem. And thank God, we had one of our officers, and I think that he may have been a sergeant, that actually saw the drawing of the crowd over on Washington. And as I was trying to get past the alley, and I was hearing the comments as what was taking place, I thought, okay, I really need to find the phone. But the officer pulled up, and when he did, he started to get rid of a lot of the people that were there, and it was going to be bad. And then there was three more officers that came as backup. This is why we have got to do something to aid our police in trying to get rid of what the problems are that we are facing down here. These apartment complexes over here are totally out of control. And not that they aren't in other sections of the city, but this is one I saw that coming into the city of Hagerstown is so appalling that it really needs to be shot with video, that everybody can understand what I'm talking about. Now, am I going after the individuals that are there? The gentleman that sat here said, "You take accountability." And you know what? If you are a good landlord, then you are going to be responsible for who is in these apartments. And I am sick to death of going over this and over this and over this, time after time. Now, with that being said, that one was okayed. Then I come to, I have a kid who's leaving the fairgrounds. Fairground Avenue, 200 block. I have, it was a white kid. I had two black males that decided that they needed to beat him up, and they were in between parked cars. He had a concussion. They stole money from him. His sneakers were about to be stolen, but then I guess they figured, oh gee, this is 3:00 in the afternoon, maybe we might not do that. We have an officer that was involved. Now, it's under investigation as to, and whether or not the victim will be willing to go to court. And there is still one of the people that accosted him that is still out. But again, you have to be able to have enough witnesses to say, hey, this person was involved, and there again, in the community that you're living in. It's a broken window theory. Look at what we're living in. Tell me that it can be improved, which it can be, and we wouldn't have this. But it's beginning to be more and more. Then we have an incident at Sheets the same week. I have a group of teenage girls. They decide that they're going to take on a girl and drag her from across Potomac Street over to McComas and beat her up, as well as the boyfriend. This girl was 18 years old, and the boy was 19. They were afraid. If they would have gone forward as far as protecting themselves, they would have ended up in jail. And then I have a gentleman who lives on Washington Street that is walking up to Sheets at 5:00 in the morning and gets hit in the back of the head with an iron, whatever. And he is really bad, has been released from the hospital. But this is what I'm telling you, we've got to stop it somehow. If we have to have somebody on each corner, I don't know, but something's got to soon give. Because I am to the point now that I'm at Whit's Inn, and the people that are now saying to me, you know what? It's time that we as citizens take our community back. So, it's either we do it, or we're going to have a group that's going to do it. So, I'm throwing it out, and I am very frustrated. So, see, Marty, I did very well. And this was all in my inn, okay?
Good news is that we, I swore in eight police officers last Friday.
Correct, but until they get up and running on the street, how far are we?
Eight more officers, they're on the street, as far as I understand from the chief.
Are we talking what?
February, they'll be...
February? And how many do we have coming from the academy, is that? Okay. Let me just tell you, in Cleveland, Ohio, we're now, and this was brought up to me by somebody who works for the city. They said that in Cleveland, we have, they have like auxiliary police in every neighborhood, but they're being paid, okay? Well, you know, we can't afford that, and I know that. But we need to have something that is that edge. Not only, I think the beginning is, is to make the landlords that are here accountable first off for their properties. I still, again, it's the broken window theory. And I'm not saying that some people that own their own homes do not take care of, but the majority of what we have going on is rental properties. And how? And that's through Kristin's, as far as legislation. We need to do something. We've got too many of them that live out of town. And until we get that, you know, I mean, short of having citizens volunteer, and then you're going to say, oh, we can't do that. Because that's putting you at risk.
Well, I think we all take your concerns seriously, Penny, and I think we'll keep working towards those ends.
Well, I'm just giving you what they're doing in other places and what people are telling me. And you know I'll be the first one out there to strap on and say, okay, this is what we're going to do. Okay, I'm done.
Mr. Alshire?
All right, Mr. Munson?
I have two quick things. One, Penny, I received an anonymous call, you may have as well, from somebody who talked about the crime on East Antietam Street from the library down to Sheets. And he said during that anonymous call that citizens down there were going to, are going to take their, their situation into their own hands. Now, on a happier note, Sunday night, I went to see, went to North High to see Huge Groove, better known as Steve Grove, perform. 1980 graduate of South Hagerstown High School. He plays the saxophone, and, and that man was incredible. That was one of the finest shows I have ever seen in my life. And he played for two solid hours without stopping. And that guy had more energy than you can imagine. And... And he worked miracles with that saxophone. It was a, it was a show to behold. It really was. And if he ever comes back to town, be sure to see him. You'll really appreciate it and remember it.
That was a really nice tribute for the South High, I think, music program, is that right?
Mm-hmm, yes. It was. You're correct. They were raising money for their band uniforms. They haven't had new uniforms in 15 years, and he came here from California at no cost to raise money for, for the band uniforms. Now, the night before, he did go to Annapolis, and one of the, one of the places down there, it was a micro bar. He filled it to the brim with patrons, so.
Very nice.
Very successful.
Well, there are lots of great things happening in Hagerstown, even though bad things happen to good people all the time. Porch Fest, I just want to echo all the great things that I have been hearing about the, the event. I was unable to attend, but one of the things that strikes me about that neighborhood is, you know, this is a neighborhood where there are a good mix of people who own their properties and people who rent, and we saw both of those groups on the street and engaging in this neighborhood activity. It was very positive. It's a very diverse neighborhood, and I think it goes to Penny's point, that the more kind of interaction owners and renters and everybody in a neighborhood have, the cleaner the neighborhood will be, the safer it will be, the more pride people will have in their neighborhood, whether they own their house or whether they rent it. So I just want to congratulate the Neighborhood's first group. I know Georgia Boy provided food. There was a kids' area. I think it was just a, an overall wonderful event. Mr. Brubaker?
Real quick addition, I talked to several, they're planning to continue that.
That's great. I wouldn't expect any less.
I hope other neighborhoods can learn from them. It's just excellent.
And it was also a celebration of the Streetscape project that happened
Yes.
last year as well, so congratulate them. Also, I want to congratulate the folks, Dr. Qatari and Jenny Fleming, with Heal and the Color Splash 5K, another very successful event that occurred over, I heard, 1,200 runners raised almost, or over $40,000 for that cause, which is so important. I also went to John Wesley Church this past Sunday, and it didn't start snowing, and there were no lightning bolts or anything, and it was a really wonderful event. And I want to thank the folks there at John Wesley for inviting me and for, for keeping me afterwards and giving me a nice meal and great conversation. And with that, I think unless anyone else has anything for the good of the calls, we shall adjourn. Thank you.